Hi.
Hey Wayne.
Sorry I'm late, I lost Zoom on one of my five devices. So.
Okay, we are recording and we are live streaming, so we will get started.
Okay.
Thank you for joining the City of Kingston Planning Board at our monthly meeting. Today is Monday, April 19th, 2021. My name is Suzanne Cahill, I'm the Planning Director for the City of Kingston and the Organizer for our virtual meeting. Before we begin our meeting, we would like to go over a few meeting guidelines to help us navigate this system as efficiently and respectfully as possible. We ask that members of the public and the press remain muted and off-camera for the length of the meeting. As the Organizer, I reserve the right to mute anyone who unmutes themselves. Board members and city staff will control their own mute button. As good practice, we ask that you mute yourself if you are not speaking to avoid background noise and feedback. If a board member or staff wishes to speak, they will raise their hand. The chairperson will call on them before they speak by stating their name clearly for our audio listeners. The board member will then unmute themselves, state their name, and speak clearly, muting after finished. All of our meetings are recorded. Both video and written transcriptions will be made available to the public on the city website at a later date. The meeting is also being livestreamed on the City of Kingston YouTube channel. In lieu of public speaking during the monthly meeting, we requested all comments to be received by 2:00 PM on Friday, April 16th, 2021. Comments could have been emailed to Suzanne Cahill, Director@skhill@kingston-ny.gov, or placed in the drop box outside of City Hall. Written comments have been posted on the city website and provided to all board members in advance of the meeting. We'd ask persons wishing to speak to contact the office in advance of the meeting. So as the public hearing is called, those who have already indicated they wish to speak will be called upon first. For all those who are joining by audio and did not pre-register but wish to speak for a hearing matter, please text the following number, 845-443-0416, with your name and the agenda item number and the address. Again, please text your name and the item number and the address of the public hearing you wish to speak on to 845-443-0416, if you wish to be called to speak for a public hearing. If you have any audio issues, send a text message to that same number, 845-443-0416. I will repeat the number again, but be aware that phone calls will not be answered during the meeting. The number to text again is 845-443-0416. As the Organizer for today's meeting, I reserve the right to lock and pause the meeting, to eject anyone who has behaved inappropriately or to enter into attorney-client conference if needed. Materials for this meeting may be found on the City of Kingston website, www.kingston-ny.gov. Once on the homepage, click on the Government Services tab, select Planning Projects, and then Planning Board. Thank you for your patience during these difficult times, and on behalf of the Planning Board, I wish you and your family good health. I will now turn the floor over to Chairman Wayne Platt to call the meeting to order at 6:08 PM.
Thank you Suzanne. Hello everybody, welcome. Welcome to the, let's see, scroll down here. April 19th, 2021 Planning Board Meeting. We'll begin with introductions, my name is Wayne Platt Jr., I'm the Chairman. We also have members Charles Palaco.
Hello.
Robert Jacobson. Matt Gillis. Kevin Roach. And Vince Archer. Suzanne Cahill is our Planning Director. We also have Kyle Adede, the Assistant Planner. Alderman Don Tolloman is the Common Council Liaison to the Planning Board. And we have Daniel Gardenstein, who is the City of Kingston Assistant Corporation Council. Item number one on our agenda is the adoption of the March 15th, 2021, and March 30th, 2021 Planning Board Meeting Transcripts and Decisions. Everybody's had a copy of, been sent a copy of those. Are there any comments or additions or deletions, anybody? Okay. At this time, I will make a motion that we adopt the March 15th and March 30th, 2021 Planning Board Meeting Transcripts and Decisions. Do I have a second?
You have a second?
Second by Charles Palaco, all in favor, Wayne Platt is a yes. Charles Palaco.
Is a yes.
Robert Jacobson.
Yes.
Matt Gillis.
Yes.
Kevin Roach.
Yes.
Okay, that is adopted. For those who are listening in, I just want to let you know that the item on the agenda here, I believe it's item 15, it's under Old Business 200 North Street. That's the Brickyard property. That will not be on tonight's agenda. We have a special meeting planned for April 26th, next Monday night, 6 o'clock. So everybody who would like to tune into that one, you can do so at that time. So that will not be on the agenda tonight. Moving into public hearings. Item number two is 255-259 Abiel Street. The lot line deletion of the lands of Nelsie Ibey, pardon me for my pronunciation, Grau, and Anzec Cebec. Section block and lot is 56.50-3-6 and 56.50-3-7.100. Secret determination. Zone RT, Heritage Area, also Coastal Zone, Ward 8. Nelsie Ibey Grau and Anzec Cebec are the applicant's owners. Is there anybody besides the applicant or owners wishing to speak on item number two? I don't think we have anybody, do we Sue?
No, we do not.
Okay. Now that I really botched those two names there, are those folks here to talk about this tonight?
We are, we are both here.
Okay, how bad was I pronouncing those names? I really did a bad job. Well, welcome, welcome tonight.
I'm Aneska and this is Nelsie.
Nelsie.
Okay, welcome. Kylo, are you gonna put up the land there, so we can take a look? There we go. Okay, so folks, you want to just give us a little narrative on what you want to do?
Yes. But it's basically a cliff. At 259 Abiel Street. And I'm an avid gardener. And I've been trying to literally garden a cliff. And when the land came to be, and after much begging, we were successfully convincing the City of Kingston to destroy the house that was on the land at 255 Abiel. I immediately tried to acquire it through complex story that you don't want to hear. I did acquire it three, four years ago. And I've been gardening it ever since and trying to tame it because it was quite a mess. Now, I was going to put a little Brad's Barn gardening shed on it. And I was told by the people at the DPW that I could do no such thing until this property belonged to me as a contiguous one-piece, 259 Abiel piece. So eliminating the lot line between 255 and 259. The little barn that I want to buy is nowhere on the land, definitely cannot hang off. So I would like to propose to eliminate the line and that I become a happy gardener. It's a little 50-foot wide lot. By the way, half of which is still at least a lot more level, more amenable to.
Okay. I was having some difficulty hearing you. Kylo, can you run the arrow over top of the line that's going to be deleted?
I'm sorry, my speaker is called a smart speaker and it always.
Well, that's fine.
Words, okay.
We're doing everything we can, the best we can during these difficult times. And I did hear a lot of your description, but I just wanted to make sure I'm understanding where the lot lines. Thank you Kylo. Anybody have any questions from the board? And Sue, this meets all of our zoning.
Yes, it's a lot line deletion, so it's expanding in parcel.
Okay. Alright. Let me see here. Under Seeker, this is a type 2, so no further review of the board is required. So at this time, I will make a motion, this is Wayne Platt, that we approve item number 2 with Board Policy 6 that will need to be signed by the owners. And written descriptions will need to be submitted and reviewed by staff, which includes the tip, the normal paper copies and one Mylar copy. Do I have a second on that? Chuck, is that you? Second by Robert Jacobson. All in favor, Wayne Platt is a yes. Chuck Palaco.
Yes.
Robert Jacobson. Matt Gillis.
Yes.
Kevin Roach.
Yes.
Okay, that is approved. Ladies, thank you for joining us tonight.
Thank you very much for listening to us and giving us permission. Really appreciate it.
Have a good evening.
Good night.
You too, good night.
Okay, item number 3 is 8 and 10 North Street and 26-28 Rear North Street. Lot line deletion of the lands of Kingston Breeze Incorporated. Section block and lot is 56.36-1-22, 23, and 37. Secret determination, Zone RFR, it's also a Heritage Area, Coastal Zone as well. Ward 8, Kingston Breeze Incorporated is the applicant owner. Do we have any speakers Sue for this one?
No, we do not.
Okay. Okay. Hi.
We have a gentleman on the train waiting, his name is Bill.
I can represent the owner if you wish. I work for his attorney.
Okay. So, what is your name again, I'm sorry?
My name is Bill Philip, can you hear me?
I can hear you now, yes, thank you, welcome.
Thank you, I've never done this before, so, I mean, I've never been in a Zoom conference before, so I hope we get this right. But anyway, I work for John Philip, who's the attorney for Jeff Sabree, also known as Kingston Breeze. And if you have any questions, I can answer them, I think.
And Wayne, this is Kylo, I just want to let you know, I think Chris Dell is also on the phone.
Yes.
Okay, hi Chris.
Hello.
I didn't realize that Chris was there.
Okay, whoever wants to hop in, just give us a little description about what you want to do here.
Well. I mean, I think Chris should say what he.
Okay.
And then if you have more questions, ask me.
Can you hear me?
Yeah, I can hear you, Chris.
Okay, what this is, is a simple lot line deletion. There's currently three tax parcels that comprise the Kingston Breeze property. And we would like to eliminate the interior lot lines, making one a large parcel. You can see Kylie is showing you the lines right now. That's the outbound she's going along now. And we're taking out the interior lines, one is a small one that she's approaching right now, right there. And then there's one other behind the brick building over on the, to the little bit farther right there. Yep, that's, she's going along it right now. So we'd like to eliminate those lines, making one parcel that would be 5.047 acres.
Okay, the buildings that we're talking about, that was the old Millens buildings back there?
That's correct, yes.
And Kylo, just for other, if folks don't know where we're talking about here, can you just show where that rail trail is right there and then how, on North Street?
The rail trail is on the far right-hand side.
Yeah.
That's the travel tracks.
Right. So this is about where the S-turn is, where East Street turns into North Street, so okay, alright, yep, okay. Pretty straightforward Sue?
Yes.
Okay, anybody on the board have any questions? Okay. Under Seeker, this is also a type 2 action, so no further review of the board is required. So, excuse me, so at this time, I'll make a motion that we approve item number 3 with Board Policy 6 that will need to be signed, as well as the written descriptions and paper copies and Mylar copies that will need to be submitted for signature. This is Wayne Platt, that's a motion. Do I have a second on that?
Second.
Second by Matt Gillis. All in favor, Wayne Platt is a yes. Charles Palaco?
Yes.
Robert Jacobson?
Yes.
Matt Gillis?
Yes.
Kevin Roach?
Yes.
Okay, that is adopted. Chris and Bill, thank you for showing up tonight.
Thank you.
Alright folks.
Thank you.
Take care now. Alright, item number 4, still under public hearings. Number 20 in 36 St. James Street. It's a lot line revision of the lands of Mountain Brewers LLC and Keegan-Kingston Realty Corporation. Section block and lot is 56.92-4-15 and 14. Secret determination, Zone C2, Ward 4, Mountain Brewers LLC and Keegan-Kingston Realty Corporation are the applicants and owners. Any folks lined up to speak about this one Sue?
No.
Okay. Alright, do we have representatives of the property?
Yes, this is Chris Dell again, I'm representing the owners.
Alright.
And what we're doing on this one is Mountain Brewers owns the large one-story brick building on the far right of the drawing. And the open area to the rear of the Keegan-Kingston Realty Corporation, which is the two-story brick building that Kyle is coming to right now. So what we'd like to do is eliminate the lot line between the Keegan-Kingston Realty Corporation and the rear lot, making that one. And then eliminate right, that small line that says 4235, that we'd like to eliminate that lot line and make the new lot line, which is over to the right there a little bit, run down along the building and out to St. James Street. So that's the original property line just projected all the way through to the rear.
Okay.
It's a lot line revision, we're starting with two, ending with two. There's a 20-foot wide easement which will allow access over the existing driving lane to the rear parcel, so used to be a nine-foot wide right-of-way along the edge of that, but we are now making it 20 feet wide, so that we can access. Actually, I misspoke myself, that's 20 feet from. Yeah, 20 feet wide easement.
Okay. Everything good?
That will allow access to the rear.
Okay. Alright, good. Nothing jumping at staff level, this is good?
Yeah.
Okay, any questions from the board?
This is Kevin.
Yes Kevin.
If I can, Kevin Roach, if I can just ask, is this in conjunction with the item 11 on the agenda?
Yes, it is Kevin.
Any reason to discuss them together, or?
Well, one is a subdivision or the lot line revision, and the other is the actual site development plan. I know that Paul Biker is here. The site plan does not require the public hearing, so that's why we had to separate them out.
Okay, great, thank you.
Alright, thank you Kevin. Anybody else? Okay. So this is also a type 2 action, and no further review of the board is required at this time. This is Wayne Platt, I will make a motion that we approve item number 4. Again, with Board Policy 6 that will need to be signed, as well as written descriptions and paper copies and Mylar copy to be submitted to staff. That's a motion, do I have a second on that?
Wayne.
Yeah.
You should also request a copy of the easement agreement once it is completed between the property owners to be submitted for the record.
Okay. Got that Chris, we're good?
Yes I do, we'll take care of it.
Alright. Thank you Sue for that, we'll include that in the motion as well. Do I have a second on that?
Second Kevin Roach.
Second by Kevin Roach, all in favor, Wayne Platt is a yes. Charles Palaco?
Yes.
Robert Jacobson?
Yes.
Matt Gillis?
Yes.
Kevin Roach?
Yes.
Okay, that is adopted. Thank you Chris.
Okay, thank you very much, good night.
Alright, good night. Alright, item number 5 is 57-73 Summer Street. Special permit renewal for a community residence. Section block and lot is 56.33-3-1. Secret determination, Zone R1, Ward 5. Wraparound Services of the Hudson Valley Incorporated is the applicant owner. Do we have anybody on here Sue to talk?
Um, I don't see anybody.
Okay. Alright. We'll bring in the representatives then, I guess.
I'm not sure who's here for that.
Okay.
Anyone on the call now for the item number 5, 57-73 Summer Street? No, not seeing anybody.
Is there something we can do without?
I believe so, yes.
This, is this required for annual reviewing, this is what this is about too?
Every two years.
Two years Wayne.
Two years, I'm just trying to scroll down through my. Okay, does everybody have any objections to moving forward tonight without the applicant here? I see that there's no issues with building safety. The police report only returned two incidents. One for patrol request and the other for lockout. Anything jumping out of staff level with this that would cause some concern?
No.
Okay. Any questions from the board? Do we, good with another two-year? Everybody's good with that? Okay, unless it changes ownership obviously, then we'll be back for that, so. Under Seeker, this is a type 2 action, no further review of the board is required. And so at this time, I will make a motion that we approve item number 5 for a period of two years with all original conditions carried forward. That's a motion, do I have a second? Second by Robert Jacobson. All in favor, Wayne Platt is a yes. Charles Palaco?
Yes.
Robert Jacobson?
Yes.
Matt Gillis?
Yes.
Kevin Roach?
Yes.
Okay, that is adopted, thank you. Moving on to item number 6. Is 324 Wall Street in forensics, 313 Fair Street. Special permit renewal to operate a drinking establishment. Second, excuse me, section block and lot is 48.331-2-6. Secret determination, Zone C2. Stockade Historic District and also Heritage Area, it's in Ward 2. Don Johnson is the applicant, 324 Wall Street, Kingston Incorporated is the owner. Anybody besides the applicant or owner wishing to speak on item number 6? Alright, and, okay. Those folks are not here tonight either, right Sue?
That's correct.
Okay. Seems pretty stable over there, right? I mean, there's nothing from, that's concerned the staff, right?
That's right, no big issues.
Only one incident for police, and that was for an alarm call. And no complaints listed with Building Safety Division or Planning Office. Does anybody have any objection to moving forward with this tonight to, for renewal?
I have a question, which retail space is that?
This is the Stockade Tavern. Used to be Singer's, yeah, because, and it connects, I guess they've got two addresses. It connects all the way over to Wall Street.
Fair.
So you mean it's the existing Stockade Tavern?
Excuse me?
So this isn't new, this is just existing?
Yes, it's a renewal.
Got it.
Okay. What about a term Sue?
Staff is recommending that we increase it to five years. It was issued for three years.
Okay, any objections to that folks?
No.
Okay. Alright. Alright, so, under Seeker, it's a type 2 action. Again, no further review of the board is required at this time. So Wayne Platt here, I will make a motion to approve item number 6 for a period of five years. If ownership changes, the new owners will have to come in for a renewal at that time with all original conditions carried forward. Do I have a second on that?
Second Kevin Roach.
Second by Kevin Roach, all in favor, Wayne Platt is a yes. Charles Palaco?
Yes.
Robert Jacobson?
Yes.
Matt Gillis?
Yes.
Kevin Roach?
Yes.
Alright, that is approved, thank you. Alright, moving on to item number 7. 95 Washington Avenue is a special permit for a basement accessory apartment. Section block and lot is 56.107-5-10. Secret determination, Zone R1, Ward 3. Rudy Morales is the applicant owner. Do we have anybody besides the applicant owner to speak about tonight?
That would be me, Matt Mason.
Okay, how you doing Matt?
Good, how you doing? I'm Rudy's architect.
Okay. Alright, so we have nobody else, the public, right Sue, we're good?
No.
Okay.
Nobody else.
Alright, um, okay, go ahead Mr. Mason.
Last summer Rudy bought, Suzanne, are you across the street, is that your place, or is it someone you know, or there's a Cahill across the street, that's you? Okay, so you've seen the whole thing. Yes, Rudy bought this two-story, single-family dwelling last summer, last summer year and wanted to renovate it. He raised it, raised the entire structure to put in a full-height basement. Renovated the first and the second floor. He was, his intent was a mother-daughter type situation. He would live in the basement and his mother and perhaps some siblings would live in the first and second floor. So he spent a lot of time and, you know, funds to renovate this building, he's done a beautiful job. Recently, he got an offer he couldn't refuse, someone that wanted to purchase it. And it seemed to make sense to Rudy for, to make the finished basement a separate dwelling. He wasn't quite, he didn't make me aware of that he wanted it to be a separate. He wasn't quite, he didn't make me aware of that he wanted it to be a separate dwelling. He went ahead and built it and there is some building code issues if he want it to be a separate dwelling. So currently, right now, he is in negotiating with this buyer who is still very interested in it. Uh, and in, in Rudy's dealings with the City of Kingston Building Department. Uh, the building department has let him know that if, if you want it to be a uh, an accessory apartment in the basement, there's certain things that he needs to do. Or parking spaces, a separate entrance in the back, uh, there's certain fire ratings that he needs to do. So he's looking at that right now, whether he's going to do it or if the new owner is going to pay for it. They're working that out right now, but he wanted to go ahead and submit to the planning board and at least have the flexibility. Of the option whether it remains a single-family dwelling or if it's a two-family. If it remains a single-family, he has to remove uh, some portions of the kitchen in the basement. Uh, minor work, but uh, so right now, he's just looking at his options proceeding from here to make everything legitimate.
Uh, this is Wayne Platt. Um, so. The building code issue that you speak of is the fact that he never got a building permit to do the work. Is that correct?
He got a building permit for the first and second floor.
Okay.
Uh, he says that he submitted a, I gave him drawings to do the basement. Uh, finished basement. He says he's, he has told me he's got a permit for it. I've asked him to produce it and he has not yet produced it.
Okay.
So, so I'm not exactly sure if he did go ahead and get a permit for the basement. He may have. I just haven't seen it.
Okay, I, I think that's the case, that there was not a building permit issued for um, the accessory apartment there for the work there. Okay, um, also, um. As far as the accessory apartment goes. The square footage um, that's allowed for such apartments for this type of building, it exceeds the legal limit. Am I, am I correct with that?
What is that limit?
Sue, do you have that?
I'm sorry, Wayne, I was trying to figure out who was, who was uh, creating the feedback. Um. The uh, legal, uh, let's see, I think I have it in the notes there. I think it's six hundred square foot maximum. Uh, not to exceed, what is it, twenty-five percent? Does anyone see that?
I just see your, your uh, is that in the staff? Yeah, I got.
Yeah.
All right.
Sounds like a plan to me.
All right.
Let me pull that up.
Yeah.
Section D, Wayne.
Okay.
Okay, I see that. I see that now.
No, not yet. Nothing really.
Oh, I see it's uh.
Hey, uh, I think, I think they're talking. I'll give you a call up there if this is done. Hold on. Okay, bye.
Sorry, I don't have my notes in front of me. Um, the other issue that we have um, discussed with the applicant. Is the owner occupancy issue because the property is for sale. Um, the person that's applying is not um, going to be the owner of the property, so. Uh, the, it, at this point, it's not possible to say that whether it would be owner occupied. Um. You know, it's, it's a possibility that in the future, when the person purchases the house, if they'd like to pursue. An accessory apartment, they could always apply and come back uh, if they plan on living there.
Yeah.
Okay. So. So I'm just trying to understand, you know, there's various scenarios. If for, say the sale falls through, Rudy does live there. Uh, he would still be able to apply for a two-family dwelling, correct?
Uh, well, I guess what he's asking for right now is a special permit from the planning board to allow an accessory dwelling, which. That is a, a planning board review. And with accessory apartments, there's a number of requirements, including owner occupancy. If he wishes to pursue a two-family dwelling. Uh, I believe he's in an R one, single-family zone. So he would need to apply to the zoning board of appeals for a use variance for a two-family. So if he ends up living there and he wants to pursue the accessory dwelling. Unit, he, the planning board could issue a special permit, but he technically is over. That square footage requirement that's in the zoning right now. So he might need a variance either way.
So are you saying, okay, so say he sells it as is, he removes a portion of the kitchen, sells it as a single-family dwelling. Um, and then the new owner, so the new owner could then be in position to apply for a two-family dwelling. Through a variance or just, would that be the process?
They could apply, I mean, they, they could discuss these options with an attorney, but they could potentially apply for a. Use variance for a two-family. Or they could apply back to the planning board for a special permit for an accessory unit. Um, we could talk to that, you know, whoever the new owner is, if they want to talk to the zoning enforcement officer about. You know, different options or the planning office about different options. We could do that. At this point, the current proposal doesn't meet the zoning requirements for an accessory apartment.
Because of this, because of the square footage amount or the percentage based relative to the primary?
The, both the size and the owner occupancy requirement.
Okay, all right, understood.
Things that we identified, uh, you know, I don't know if the zoning enforcement officer has looked at. Additional, you know, any other issues that could potentially need a variance, but those are two issues that fall under the special permit category. That he currently is not meeting.
Okay, understood. All right, well, thank you for your help.
Um. This is Wayne Platt, so I, I think that, you know, based on. The fact that the uh, square footage here and, and, and the fact that it's not owner occupied for this accessory apartment. I'm kind of leaning towards uh, denying the application, but there's no question that. That Mr. Morales has done a wonderful job bringing this, this property back to a vibrant condition. But I, I think that, you know, for what he wants to do with it, uh, to make an accessory apartment. Um, I'm inclined to deny the application at this time. Anybody else have any feelings on that?
Matt speaking here. Um, I'm in line with you there, Wayne. It's, once it's owner occupied, that's when I think this should come back to the board.
Yeah, yeah.
I agree. At this point, it doesn't need the zoning code of any kind.
Robert, can you say that again? I'm sorry.
I, I would agree. I mean, at this point, it doesn't meet the zoning code, so therefore they're going to need to get some type of a variance. The board can't have it.
Okay. All right, um. Anything, anybody else have any issues or questions from the board? All right, um, so this Wayne Platt, I, at this time, I'm going to make a motion that we um. Uh, deny uh, the special permit request for item number seven. Um, do I have a second on that?
Second, that.
Second by Charles Palaco. All in favors, Wayne Platt is a yes. Charles Palaco?
Yes.
Robert Jacobson? Matt Gillis?
Yes.
Kevin Roach?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Mason, thank you for coming tonight.
Okay.
All right, and uh, uh, maybe we'll be seeing you again, all right?
Yes, yes, okay, thank you.
Have a good night, sir.
You too.
Right. Okay, moving on to item number eight, uh, two sixty-four Lucas Avenue. A site plan to construct a multifamily apartment complex consisting of four buildings. With forty-seven units and related site improvements. Section block and lot is fifty-six point eighty-eight dash four dash seven. Secret determination zone R four ward one, SSLI Holdings LLC as the applicant owner. So I know we have a number of folks to speak on this, right?
Yes, we do. Um, Wayne, would you have the applicants introduce themselves first or do you want to start directly in with these speakers?
This is Robert, yes, Robert.
On this application, as stated in previous meetings.
Yes, absolutely. Um, so Robert Jacobson is going to recuse. Vince Archer, you're hopping in here, okay? Okay, we'll, see you later, Robert. Um, okay, um. Okay, Sue, who do we have to, to speak on this tonight?
Okay, the first person is Stephen Mafia. If you were on the.
Yes, yes, I'm here.
Okay.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Thank you. Uh, good evening, Chairman Platt, members of the board, aldermen, parliament. Suzanne, my name is Stephen Mafia. I'm a licensed professional engineer. I have over thirty-five years of experience in the field of traffic engineering. And have worked on many projects in cities and towns throughout the Hudson Valley area. I'm here tonight on behalf of the neighbors who live on Blue Stone Court. Adjacent to the Blue Stone Commons proposed apartment complex. The neighbors and I have concerns, and I'm sure they'll be expressing them later, regarding the impacts of this development. And for my part, particularly with its potential impacts on traffic flows and safety. Uh, the neighbors asked me to review the Blue Stone Commons submission. And those submissions included the traffic assessment prepared by Creighton Manning engineers. And the site plan prepared by Chastain Engineering. My review is summarized in a report dated April ninth. Which I submitted to Suzanne for distribution to the board and other reviewers, and I assume you have copies of that or have access to that, to that uh, report. Tonight, I'm just going to give you a brief summary of my review. And, and my findings and recommendations. First, as a general overview, in my opinion, accessing a forty-seven unit apartment complex. By way of Blue Stone Court, which is a cul-de-sac that serves only ten existing single-family homes. Could have, is likely to have a significant impact on traffic flow, pedestrian safety. And other environmental conditions such as noise, air quality and visual impacts. The uh, those conditions uh, would obviously relate mostly to. Properties along Blue Stone Court as the proposed access is from the main part of the site to Blue Stone Court. After carefully reviewing the traffic and site plan. I've concluded those, that those impacts were not sufficiently addressed by the Creighton Manning assessment or the site plan. With respect to traffic impacts, typically, when we do traffic studies, the potential. Traffic flow impacts are eval, evaluated by conducting a detailed level of service analysis. At key intersections that will be used by the new traffic. Intersection level of service uh, is a term used to describe the quality of traffic flow. By identifying delay conditions, and that is the time it takes for cars and trucks to get through an intersection. Longer it takes uh, time-wise than the worse the level of services. Such a detailed analysis would have included the intersection of Lu- Lucas Avenue and Blue Stone Court. As well as other key intersections on Lucas Avenue. Creighton Manning, their assessment did not provide such analysis. And they cited two factors to explain why they didn't do that. First, Creighton Manning described the New York State DOT method of filtering. A proposed project's level of new traffic generation to see if the detailed analysis is warranted. That filter or threshold is one hundred new vehicles, new vehicle trips. On a single approach to an affected key intersection. So in the case of Blue Stone Commons, in order to trigger a detailed analysis at Blue Stone Court. Or for that matter, any, any key intersection along Lucas Avenue. This threshold would only be exceeded if the development was for over two hundred sixty apartments. Obviously, a significant large, significantly larger development. In my experience, that threshold is applicable when the roadway is a high-volume state or local road. Where adding a hundred new trips would increase traffic by more than just a small percentage. On Blue Stone Court, that increase in traffic from the forty-seven unit apartment complex. On a percentage basis would be very significant and should have been analyzed in detail by conducting. The level of service analysis I just described. Their second factor was based on a thirty-nine-year-old, going on forty-year-old article. In the IT Journal, that's the Institute of Transportation Engineers. Um, uh, uh, journal report. Uh, that hypothesized an unverified approach to evaluate. When additional traffic on a low-volume street would be considered, quote, "too much," unquote. To my knowledge, that approach, which is an environmental quality assessment, was never verified. By anyone or further developed to the level of accepted practice or recommended guidelines in the field of traffic engineering. So in my opinion, this filter, this case, does not apply. Therefore, I concluded and recommend that a detailed level of service analysis should be required. At key intersections along Lucas Avenue, especially at the Blue Stone Court intersection. Second item of concerns, of concern regards safety impacts. I find that there are some considerations that must be made by the applicant and the city regarding potential impacts on safety. To do this, there must be an evaluation of the area's crash history. Complete with the number of accidents, the types and severity of accidents. And the potential for traffic from this development to worsen those accident, that ha, that accident history. Without that, the city cannot provide a comprehensive basis for an approval. The analysis of crash data is an important factor to weigh in the decision to allow or deny traffic from a new development. That has the potential to negatively impact the safety of all road users. That includes drivers, cars and trucks, bicyclists and pedestrians. Now, we can't predict the occurrence of accidents. No one can do that. But we can make some judgments as to the likelihood of an increased danger. If the history or the crash history here shows that a danger already exists. And additional traffic, cars, trucks, buses, bikes, pedestrians, the whole thing can worsen the danger. So uh, in that regard, we look, also looked at pedestrians. Uh, and any accommodations for pedestrians that uh, is being proposed by the applicant. Site plan indicates a pedestrian path to Lucas Avenue along the uh, the easement. Or, or extension of the uh, of lot two out to Lucas Avenue. However, at the end of that roadway, uh, pathway, there's no pedestrian amenity or safety accommodations included in the site plan. Now. Uh, where the path would end at Lucas Avenue. Nothing is shown that would provide for safe pedestrian access to Lucas if people were to walk out from the site to Lucas Avenue. When they reach Lucas Avenue, pedestrians, pedestrians will be essentially unprotected from passing traffic. Furthermore, vehicular access is not at Lucas Avenue, but a pedestrian access is. It's unlikely that the applicant will clear, clear out any existing vegetation. Which the Creighton Manning uh, assessment admits severely limits site distance. So with limited site distance at the end of the walking path. And no sidewalks or crosswalks on Lucas Avenue. Pedestrians will be placed in a very dangerous condition, directly exposed to through traffic on this busy collector road. My findings and recommendations in this regard is that a crash history of Lucas Avenue. And Blue Stone Court, as well as other nearby intersections and segments of this busy street. Which was to be submitted by Creighton Manning, but wasn't, as of the writing of this report, must be submitted. And we now reserve the right to, to review and comment on this material once it is submitted. Having addressed traffic flow and safety, I also uh, reviewed the access plan. Uh, which is provided in the Chastain Engineering plans. Essentially, I determined that the applicant has not adequately addressed or explained. Why an available thirty-foot-wide right-of-way to Lucas Avenue from this, from the main part of the site. Has been ignored as the obvious route for the project's full-time access. Opting instead for connecting to the Blue Stone Court. Location with the associated negative impacts that I described in my report. This finding is based on my review of the city's records of the zoning change dating back to nineteen ninety-one. The Blue Stone Commons property. In doing that, I found the following. The main lot, which is known as alternatively as lot two or parcel B. was subdivided and has a sixteen-foot-wide right-of-way exten- or not actually right-of-way, it's an extension of the lot uh, to Lucas Avenue. The smaller lot, Lot One or Parcel A, has a fourteen-foot-wide easement, uh, which is parallel to and adjacent to the sixteen-foot extension. Together, they provide a thirty-foot-wide right-of-way that could easily accommodate a two-way access road and possibly even a sidewalk. Now, an access to Lucas Avenue was evaluated by Creighton Manning with regard to site distance. Site distance is the availability to provide adequate clear sightlines for traffic exiting and entering the, uh, the access from Lucas Avenue. Creighton Manning indicated in their study that they believe safe site distance could be provided by clearing some roadside vegetation along Lucas Avenue. However, they stopped short of confirming that they can be done. Uh, this confirmation can be provided, I believe, by simply extending the survey of existing conditions to include the sightline areas on Lucas Avenue to the east and west of the easement. So, my findings and recommendations in this regard is that the applicant should be required to confirm the available sightlines on Lucas Avenue at their easement and to explain why an access to Lucas Avenue would not be acceptable. Also, they mentioned in their, in their assessment that, uh, adding another access to Lucas Avenue would not be a desirable situation. In that regard, I point out that Lucas Avenue is a collector road, and its function is to accommodate both local residential side streets and direct property driveway access. Uh, to the east, Lucas Avenue connects with Washington Avenue, and that is the area's main arterial with access to other neighborhoods in Kingston, I'm sure you all know that. Uh, Washington Avenue then provides access to, uh, regional system like the thruway. As a collector road, Lucas Avenue is designed and expected to accommodate numerous cross streets and driveways. Also, the density of side streets existing and driveways along Lucas Avenue is essentially the same today as it was in nineteen ninety-one. That's when the zoning board approved the rezoning of the subject property. The only addition in the area since then was Blue Stone Court about fifteen years ago. And that intersection was located opposite an existing intersection, Boulder Avenue. The ZBA, I believe representing the interests of the city of Kingston, the best interests of the city, expressed no concerns at the time with the placement of another side street to Lucas Avenue or driveway at the property's Lot One or Parcel A location. In fact, I believe they expected it to be there. Noting in the, uh, in the record, uh, of the rezoning process, their continued recommendation to maintain a thirty to fifty-foot-wide right-of-way from Lucas Avenue. And as I pointed out, a thirty-foot-wide right-of-way does already exist. So again, my findings in general and recommendations are that the applicant of Blue Stone Commons should be required to address in detail the likely negative impacts of the proposed development. Tell us why the thirty-foot, uh, access to Lucas Avenue is not pursued uh, and, and, uh, and an access to Blue Stone Court be, uh, designed as an emerg- an emergency access. And they should be required to address all of the items, uh, identified in this report and, uh, by other commenters in the city uh, to the satisfaction of the planning board before any approvals are granted. So, at this point, I thank you for your time and, and consideration. I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have. And, uh, that's my presentation for now. I'll turn it back over to, to you. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Okay.
That was very deep. And I, I appreciate it. And, uh, Sue, who's our next speaker?
Next speaker is John Dowley.
Uh, good evening. Can you all hear me?
Yes, we can.
Oh, great. Um, I want to thank you for the opportunity to address you regarding the Blue Stone Commons proposed development. I appreciate the time. First, I would like to restate that I support the development of this two-point-six-nine-eight acre parcel in a way that would enhance the existing neighborhood and the city of Kingston. I know that others of my neighbors share my view in this regard. That said, the proposed development consisting of forty-seven residences within four buildings and with sole access from Blue Stone Court simply does not work for several reasons. Most obvious reason is that the development is simply too big for the property. The current design in its base form only provides for four buildings and a parking lot. There is no room for open space, considering that two-point-five-nine acres of the available two-point-six-nine acres will be disturbed, will have to be disturbed to accommodate it. The planned ingress and egress from Blue Stone Court, adjacent to two existing driveways, is a design that does not consider nor anticipate the negative impact to the two properties immediately adjacent to it. In an attempt by us to get clarification on how the decision was made to set the access egress from Blue Stone Court, we asked the questions of the developers. In a February second email from them, they said, and I quote, "The city will have to provide their reasoning on the entrance off of Blue Stone." This was reiterated in, by them in last month's meeting. "I think neighbors should submit that request to the planning department," end quote. Their response was, "We would have to get the answer to that question from the city." After several attempts to get the answer from the city, we still do not have it. So we must therefore conclude that there was no city-sourced decision about where the entrance to the development had to be. At the last planning board meeting, the developer indicated that all or most of the construction vehicles would access the development via Lucas Avenue. If trucks and other construction vehicles can safely access the site from Lucas Avenue for an extended period of time during the build-out phase of the development, then that access can be safely designated as the main entrance exit for the residents of any proposed development. The access to the development from Lucas Avenue is safer, more convenient, and preserves the stability of the Blue Stone Court neighborhood. Additionally, there are no sidewalks on either side of Lucas Avenue in either direction from Blue Stone Court uh, down to Burham Street heading into Kingston, and none on either side of the street of Lucas Avenue heading towards the town of Ulster Line. What this indicates to, to us is that the residents of Blue Stone Commons will be using their cars, not walking on Lucas Avenue. This will reliably contribute to more traffic on Blue Stone Court, which was originally designed to accommodate ten residences, not fifty-seven. Um, there has been no discussion that I am aware of, nor indication, that the plans for the development have been fully reviewed by the Department of Public Works, the Water Department, Central Hudson, or the City Engineering Department. In fact, the city planner questioned the developers regarding their communications with the City Engineering Department at the first review of this plan by the planning board several months ago. At the time, it was clear that there had been no communication. Hopefully, it has happened since that time. But inevitably, it begs the question, how can you make an informed decision on the feasibility of and the impact to property taxes for this development without input from the parties responsible for the infrastructure? And my final comment to you is this. We appreciated very much, uh, your coming to our neighborhood, to the site, to see it for yourselves. Nonetheless, the site of your cars parked along Blue Stone Court gave us a good preview of what the street will look like if you approve the project as it is currently planned. Where are visitors to the development going to park? What happens when it snows? How safe does that make the street for the young children who live here? The impact to safety, the livability of the neighborhood will be severely diminished if you approve this project. It is our hope that the planning board will take these issues, among others, into careful consideration while reviewing the proposed development plan and reject the Blue Stone Commons proposal in its present form. Again, I appreciate the opportunity to speak to you. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Wayne, before we move on to the other speakers, just a, a note, point of reference that, we have been referring the documents to the Public Works Department, Engineering Department, Water Department, and others for their comments, along with the Building Safety Division, and we are waiting to hear back from them. I do know that there have been communications back and forth. Um, some comments, um, from the Engineering Department were just responded to late this afternoon. Um, so, there is back and forth communication, and we can follow up with the other departments at staff level on that.
Okay. Also, Sue, we're, we are awaiting a response from the zoning enforcement officer for a few issues as well?
Yes, that is correct.
What are those issues?
Uh, the variance issues were the, um, usable open space question and front and rear yard setbacks.
Okay.
All those were the two major ones. I don't know if he's identified any other aspects.
Okay, so we're still waiting to get word back from him as well, right?
He is looking at the plan as a whole, yes.
Okay.
Okay. The next speaker is Carol Dowley.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak about the proposed project at two sixty-four Lucas Avenue. My name is Carol Dowley. My husband and I have lived at two sixty-two Lucas Avenue, corner of Blue Stone Court, for almost twenty-five years. Before Blue Stone Court and the homes that are now a part of our neighborhood were built, we enjoyed a lovely, natural, forested area behind our home. Once Blue Stone Court was established in two thousand and four, we started welcoming neighbors and enjoyed the experience of watching young families flourish and grow. Ours is a diverse neighborhood comprised of all ages, backgrounds, and ethnicities. The development, Blue Stone Commons, being currently proposed for a two-point-six-nine acre piece of land adjacent to Blue Stone Court, will definitely change the neighborhood in a negative way. As currently planned, the project offers little open space, a high-density complex, and an unsafe environment due to, to the considerable increase in traffic entering and leaving the development onto Blue Stone Court and subsequently to Lucas Avenue. And on the subject of traffic, one of the main concerns I share with our neighbors is the inappropriate choice of access from Blue Stone Court. Mr. Interanti, at the March sixteenth planning board meeting, indicated that construction traffic would all or mostly use Lucas Avenue as the access to the development. Why then can't this entrance on Lucas, Lucas be used by residents of the complex? It would offer a safer and more convenient option for Blue Stone residents. I started speaking about the consequential change we witnessed here in two thousand and four, and would like to add that we will welcome that same or similar experience, but not at, as it is currently planned by SSLI Holdings. We understood and welcomed the need for growth and change at that time, and we understand it today. I am adding my voice to the others who speak tonight about the critical need to reject this project in favor of a living space that will offer less density, more open space, and a reasonable and safe access, all three of which will maintain the character and integrity of the existing environment. And thank you for the time to speak.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
The next speaker is Pat Lopiano.
Hello, I'm Patrick. I'm Patrick Lopiano, and I'm, I'm, I'm pleased to, uh, express myself on this issue. Uh, I've lived on Lucas Avenue since, uh, nineteen eighty-two. I live downslope from this development. And I've found that living downslope from any development is, my basement gets flooded more often. And also, uh, also, my basement gets flooded more often, and my property ends up turning into a swamp. There's a lot of runoff. Uh, years ago, the optometrist upslopeed from me. He wanted to put an office in his house. I didn't own the property, so I couldn't protest. And I didn't realize that the property would include a huge parking lot. And if that water doesn't go into the ground, it goes over my property. So, uh, also, what I have is, years ago, my water supply pipe busted on, on, under the road. The plumber dug it up. It ended up being a lead pipe that got crushed by the extra weight of trucks. This was put in back in the nineteen twenties and thirties. They didn't expect this kind of traffic or these bigger trucks. So my water, so my water pipe got crushed. And, uh, another thing I see living on Lucas, well, in the morning at six o'clock, I feel like my pillow is right next to the thruway. The amount of traffic going by and the noise, people don't go fif- they don't go thirty-five. They're doing about fifty or sixty to get to work. And if you're going to have more density up here, it's going to be worse. And another thing I see, I see a lot of people walking up Lucas. There are no sidewalks. One thing that you need to plan with, if you do, want to develop anything, is build up the infrastructure first. It's like putting a saddle on a horse. You gotta do, you gotta do that first. Can't be developing without planning. I know you're the planning board, but let's put in infrastructure, which is going to cost us more tax dollars, of course. Another issue I have is all the citizens around here have been paying taxes for years to build this existing infrastructure. And then you have developers that come along and tap into it. And they tap into it to make a profit. And then they have the nerve to turn around and ask the city for a tax break. We bought and paid for the infrastructure that exists.
stomach ache.
But anyway, I, I, I just, uh, I appreciate being able to express my views on this. Thank you and take care.
Thank you, Mr. Lopiano. The next speaker is Alderman Jeffrey Ventura Morrell.
Jeffrey.
Good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can, Alderman.
Hi, this is, uh, Jeffrey Ventura Morrell. I'm the Alderman for Ward One. Uh, I thank you all for allowing me to speak tonight. And I just wanted to speak and express my, um, support for the concerns of, uh, of my constituents on, along Lucas and Blue Stone Court. I've been hearing, uh, concerns from a lot of residents, not only the neighboring properties, but properties, uh, property owners all along the ward. Uh, and, um, it is undoubtedly that this, uh, project will, uh, severely impact, uh, not only traffic, but quality of life and density of the area. So I, I ask you to please, uh, take their concerns into consideration before you make your final, um, declaration. Um, thank you for allowing me to speak and good evening.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. The next speaker is David Gordon.
Hi, can everybody hear me?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Great. Um, hi, my name is David Gordon. I'm an attorney, and I'm representing the neighbors of the proposed project as well. Uh, I'll be very, very brief. The neighbors asked me to look primarily into the zoning issues. And it appears from, I believe, the statements of Ms. Cahill before that these have already been referred to the building inspector. Uh, I also submitted a letter to the building inspector, uh, very similar to the letter that I submitted to you as a comment on this project, I believe, on Thursday evening. Very simply, and I believe Ms. Cahill identified these as well, the two primary, um, zoning violations that are actually fairly clear are, um, uh, the lack of open space and the failure to meet the, um, uh, the setbacks. The open space is, um, is, is very, very, uh, um, clear. There's a requirement of between eighteen and nineteen thousand square feet of open space. Um, they don't have really any designated. They don't have really any designated, and they seem to be presuming that every square inch that's not otherwise paved is open space, and it just doesn't work. There's, there's clearly not enough. At most, they have a couple of thousand square feet in the southwest corner, which was set aside apparently for a picnic area. Setting aside questions about that, there's just not enough anywhere else. I'd also point out that they were, they kind of tried to shift the definition in their submittal to you. On the front page, they used, they paraphrased the definition for open space in the city code. It's really a requirement for usable open space, which requires a minimum dimension of 40 feet. And I think that would make the, the violations obvious. Hopefully, the building inspector will, will give an opinion supporting that. Secondly, the question of setbacks. The applicant has tried to circumvent this by essentially turning the project on its side. It is very clear that the front yard of this project is on Bluestone Court. That's where the, the access is. It's where the building is going to face. They are essentially pretending that the front yard is somehow, it's not on Lucas Avenue. They're pretending that it is oriented toward Lucas Avenue. I don't think that would meet anybody's understanding of what a front yard is. And again, we're hoping that the building inspector will, will make that determination. That's it. I would just urge the board to, to await the building inspector's determination. It would be somewhat fruitless to move forward with a, with a, with a site plan review, a secret review, et cetera, without even determining whether the zoning is compliant. And at least with respect to open space, the non-compliance is very, very large. They don't come close to meeting it. It's probably a fraction. And so we would just urge the board to, to wait for the determination coming out of the Building Department. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. The next speaker is Michael Flynn.
Hello?
Yes.
Hi there.
Hello there. My name is Michael Flynn and I live at 34 Bluestone. And I want to reiterate some, the statements made by Mr. Gordon in that this process seems backwards. Until we have a zoning determination as to what the setbacks are, we shouldn't be approving the building or the open space. If the space is not adequate under the zoning rules, you're going to have to send them back and you're going to approve something you don't have to approve. The same thing is true with respect to the open space. Oh, the setback requirements. They have looked at the Lucas Avenue entrance and said, that's the front yard. It is 200 feet from the front street is the edge of this lot. No way is this the front yard on Lucas. But if you put the front yard setback on Bluestone, they only have 27 feet shown on the drawings when it's supposed to be 30. And then the back entrance or the backyard setback is supposed to be 30 feet to the rear of the parcel, which would be to the east. And they only have 27. If you take six feet of developable space off the front and back of these buildings, you have a completely different project. And how you could pass on a project that you don't know if it fits into the development is strange. The other similar issue has to do with the open space. The usable open space is supposed to be 40-foot minimum dimensions. There are no dimensions shown on the architectural drawings for any of the open space. So there is no way that anyone can determine that there is 40 feet minimum. And although I have written, or David Gordon has written about these issues, we have heard no response as to why this development meets either of those requirements. We also have issues with respect to the disability provisions of this, of this development. The building, when we first raised the disability concerns, there was nothing in these drawings about disabilities at all. When we raised it, they made changes to the exterior of the building. They have done nothing to the interior of the buildings. If you change the interiors to accommodate the space required for wheelchairs in usable kitchens, usable bathrooms, and pathways for wheelchairs through these units, you're going to have to make the units larger. And if you make them larger, the walls are going to change and you're approving things that are going to move. In addition to ADA or Fair Housing Act, the provisions in the Kingston Code are mandatory that you should not approve vast expanses of concrete for parking areas. There is a limit to 12 spaces. It's mandatory. There shall not approve any more than 12 spaces in a row. In, in front of each of these four buildings, there are rows of 16 parking spaces separated by a picnic table and another 16 spaces. I don't know how this meets code, or anyone could even pretend that this would be compliance. The Kingston Code also requires that this development conform to the neighborhood. The neighbors argue that there is another apartment building that is contiguous to the developer, that this is contiguous to another multifamily development. That is true, but a stretch. There is to the rear of this parcel, another parcel that you can hardly see from Lucas Avenue or Bluestone, and there's a 20-minute walk to reach that other property. Everything else in this neighborhood is a single-family dwelling. And that's what you have to find this conforms to. Tree conservation is mandatory in Kingston. It is required that trees be maintained to the maximum extent possible. I cannot find what trees will be retained. The developers have said in a letter dated after all of our comments that they're shown on his plans. I looked back on the plans this afternoon. I could not find any trees that are marked as being retained. I cannot believe that this is retention of trees to the maximum extent possible. Rather, this is a development as dense as you can make it to the maximum extent possible. As Mr. Mafia has said, this traffic system, the traffic study they have submitted is rather superficial and does not really delve into safety concerns. Crash studies are what tell you whether or not it's safe. If there are a series of crashes along Lucas Avenue and they are creating personal injury, property damage, or other issues, we should know about those and design our projects and plan our projects so as to minimize those risks to the citizens of the city. And lastly, I have written to you now twice on the issue of the long-eared bat. And the environmental laws of the, of the United States are in flux. A court has ruled that those standards to protect the bat are improper, not enough. We need more, but they didn't say what. So the federal standards for preserving the bat are unknown. We also know that the present development is relying upon those standards to develop this parcel. So we know what is being proposed is inadequate. We know that federal court has ruled that the present standards are not compliant with the Endangered Species Act. But we don't know what is. What we should at least know is are bats present? A study can determine that, and right now, no one knows. Do they use the trees on this parcel for roosting? Are they, if you cut them all down, as is proposed, will that endanger the species? We don't know. Can you leave some trees or some group of trees and save a good portion of the habitat? We don't know. And the developer is asking you to approve a development without knowing the environmental consequences. New York environmental law does not allow that. We are to affect, investigate every potential environmental impact. And the effect on the bat is certainly a potential environmental issue. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Flynn. The next speaker is Mark Nelson.
Hello?
Hello.
Hi, thank you, everyone. Thank you for the time that you're giving me to speak. I will try to be brief. I've submitted a letter outlining a lot of my objections, and I just want to just give a little detail to that. I've lived, I live at 54 Bluestone Court. I've lived in Kingston my entire life. We purchased our home on Bluestone Court in 2009. Since then, I've raised two girls and taught them how to ride bikes on the street. I'm currently raising a five-year-old son and teaching him as well. If this project is created, the excessive traffic generated by this 47 apartment, unit apartment complex will make it too dangerous to let my son ride his bike. I've submitted to the board a more detailed letter expressing my objections to this project. This includes the errors in the Creighton Manning's traffic study that were outlined in Mr. Mafia's report. Finally, I have grave concerns about the project using the existing water and sewer lines on Lucas Avenue. There have been multiple breaks in the water line at the intersection of Lucas and Dunham and Avenue, breaks as recent as June of 2020. I would hope the city investigates the current status of the water and sewer lines on this project that they will be tapping into. I'm asking the board to require revision of this project that will scale the size back considerably and put the entrance to this project on Lucas Avenue. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Nelson. Gail Flynn.
Do I do star six?
We, we have, we can hear you.
Can you hear me? Okay. I just have two really short comments. One had to do with the, I was looking at the site plan and looking at the very detailed description of the different trees and the diameter of the trees, which was great. However, it, the one thing that I had a question about is that all of the maple trees were simply listed as maple. And what the, one thing I wanted to bring to the board's attention is that there's a huge difference. There's indigenous maple, which is even our state tree, which is the sugar maple. And there, some of those exist on the lot right now. And those are very important for local fauna and should be given preference, not only for aesthetic and beauty reasons for the development, but also for the, the entire animal and insect and bird population in the area. Because the indigenous sugar maple is a lot more important than, say, the invasive Norway maple that also exists. So I would request that the developer delineate what kind of maple trees are on it and try to make an effort to save the, the state tree, I guess. And then another one is just a small story from this neighborhood. Talking about the infrastructure, talking about water runoff. My little next-door neighbor Owen, who's eight, has actually, with his own labor, built a little tiny pond and very proudly told me that whenever the heavy rains come and it floods from the storm drain that is on there, there's a city storm drain that's on our property and our next-door neighbor's property, that all the runoff comes down from that storm drain and fills up his little pond that he built. So all of which is just simply to say, we really need to be careful about runoff from the existing extent of parking and pavement. So I do want to thank the board very much for the detailed attention you've been giving, giving to this whole project and the concern. So thanks a lot.
Thank you, Ms. Flynn.
Thank you. That is all of the speakers for this evening that have pre-registered and have not received any other text messages. So I believe we are done with this portion.
Okay. Let us welcome the applicants.
Okay, I believe that we have, as far as the applicants, Luke Interante, I believe is on Zero. Interante is on Stefan Sanzi. I've seen Matt Rudicoff, Eric Houston, and Ken Worsted. The development team, if you could unmute and open your videos.
Hi, everyone. Thanks for having us.
Hi there.
Just want to introduce yourself, please.
Sure. Luke Interante, part of SSLI Developer and, and owner of the parcel. And we have various members of our team on with us tonight.
Zero Interante Architect for the project.
Stefan Sanzi, partners with Luke and SSLI Holdings.
Eric Chastain, engineer for the project.
I'm Matthew Rudicoff, the environmental planner for the project.
Hello there.
I think I'm last. I'm Ken Worsted with Creighton Manning Traffic Consultant for the applicant.
Welcome, everybody. I know we continue to hear a lot of the, the, the public speaking about some of their concerns about, about this, this, this project. And I know that a revised plan was submitted on the 14th. I think that's when the, the Planning Office received it. Kyle, do we have a, 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 something to see with that? Can you, can you throw something up there? I don't know if you have anything available.
Sure. Yeah, I could put up a site plan, the revised site plan. It's just loading at the moment.
I know it's on the city's website. So while we're waiting for that, I know, just, just wanted to reiterate that we are still awaiting some determinations from the zoning enforcement officer. I know there's issues with, about the usable open space and the setbacks. And we are also, as Sue mentioned earlier, waiting for a word back from the various city agencies like Engineering, Water Department. And we're also still involved with the secret process too, so. While we're waiting for, for the, for this to load, Luke and Stefan, do you want to, you want to speak to anything right now? I don't know if we want, I know you have Mr., have Ken here, Ken Worsted. I don't know if you want, oh, there we go. Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, I'd like to just run through quickly a couple of higher-level things. And then I think Ken wants to speak to the traffic. Yeah, we did provide an updated set. I believe the revised set is dated four-ten, sent somewhere around four-twelve or four-fourteen that you guys are looking at now and have on the site. The two big items to note, I think, would be the, those zoning things in regards to the setback in the open space. So number one, as in any project that has frontage on two streets, you know, we try to make the best decision as to what's the front and what's the side. The difference being three feet. We've gone over this a few times and we can most certainly make an adjustment. And we've had that discussion with Eric. Let us know where you, what you would like to determine as the front yard, and we'll make the adjustment. Additionally, to follow that, which I think solves all the setback issues is we can actually make the setback thirty feet on every side. So it's really not going to make a difference to us, despite what some of the comments have been, that taking six feet out of the project would be a enormous disruption and cause a huge revision. It's actually not the case. It would be a very minor revision, and we wouldn't even have to change the sizes of the buildings. We could shift everything inward that three feet on either side. So our stance right now is that whatever feedback we get from Eric in zoning, we will incorporate that, and it's not going to be anything that causes an issue for us. And then number two, on the open space, again, you know, comments alluding to how little there is that's actually qualified. We have a, an updated plan in the new set that is the, shows the usable open space. We have a total of twenty-one-plus thousand square feet, with the requirement being eighteen thousand six hundred square feet. All of these spaces were discussed with Eric. Kitchen and zoning, myself and he on a phone call where we looked at the plan and went over it. So the indication to us has been that these areas that we are showing now on this revised plan, not the original plan, are actually allowed. And even if there was some that were in contention and needed to be taken out, we still do have a buffer there. So we do feel like these zoning issues will actually be resolved once we hear back from Eric.
Okay. Also, are we, Sue, are we lacking some, some definitive screening of, of, of schedule on this at all? Are we lacking anything there?
Well, they, they have, excuse me, they have submitted an updated landscaping plan. We've started to review it. I've gotten through some of it and made some comments. We would like to be able to send our feedback to the applicants again. Between last month's meeting and this month's meeting, Kyle, both Kyla and myself were able to meet with both Stefan and Luke. And I thought that that was a very good opportunity for us to go through all of the staff notes. We haven't quite followed up on all of them within this set of plans. We're also looking to see how the public's comments have been addressed in the plans. So it's, it's a lengthy process. We're, we're still working through it. But there are comments where we are asking, I do have some questions on the landscape plan specifically. They are, they are identified. I don't know if we want to get into that detail at this point. They are in the staff notes.
Okay. Yeah, Wayne. And this isn't a criticism, this is Wayne, this is not a criticism by any means, but, you know, with the, the planning office had received these updated plans, the revised plans on the fourteenth. So there really hasn't been much time, you know, between that point and now for, for them to, you know, totally review the whole thing and for us to review it as well. So, and it's not the first time things like this happen. I know things happen and, and just, that's just the timing of, of when they were, the update was submitted and, you know, the process for reviewing these at the staff level too. So, but that, and again, that's not a criticism. I just wanted to, to make that aware and put that on the record as well.
Also, if I could just jump in, I need to clarify one issue. As Mr. Gordon indicated when he spoke, he has submitted a formal request for an interpretation from the zoning enforcement officer that triggers an entire process through the ZEO. I have been in contact with Mr. Sanzi, who has passed me on to his attorney. My expectation is that written submissions are going to be submitted in response to Mr. Gordon's formal request for an interpretation. So while Mr. Interonte is, on the one hand, talking about discussions with Eric, it has, to a certain extent, elevated to a different level at this point because the formal interpretation has been requested. So this is no longer just an issue of discussions between the applicant and the CEO. This is a formal interpretive process that has been triggered by Mr. Gordon's letter.
Okay.
And we understand that. Clarified, I was giving information based on prior discussions with, with Eric on that, that led us to this current revision.
And this is changing daily because we just received the formal request. I'm not even sure if that's been formally served or provided to you yet.
We, yes, correct. We understand that, and we've already let our attorney know. So we're, we're well aware. Thank you.
Okay. Luke, did you say that Mr. Worsted would like to speak to the?
You want to speak to some traffic items?
Welcome.
I'll, I'll leave it to discretion of the board about how detailed you prefer I get into or not. We did receive Mr. Mafia's comment letter last week, as well as some of the other resident comments. And we started to prepare a response for that. I was reminded about our, our accident request to DOT. And it chimed in with me that we still hadn't received something. So we did reach out to them. They still are, they are still processing that request. It has taken longer than they typically take. But we did check in with them. They said they still have it, they're still working on it. So that information is still pending.
And what, what aspect of the traffic study was, is that, Mr. Worsted?
That's regards to the, the crash history. So DOT, we did reach out to the police department. But police departments tend to file their information based on like a case number and a date because it's easy to look up in that fashion. And, and all that information gets compiled by a department in DOT where they, in addition to placing it both with a date, they located on the street. So it's much easier to ask them for a segment of road or an intersection and, you know, request accidents for the latest three years, four years, however, however you, whatever you wish to see. So that, relative to that information, DOT is still working on it and getting that stuff back to us.
Okay.
Relative to some of the other comments, I appreciate that there's a, a, a big difference in traffic that's occurring here. You know, you have a, you have a road that was constructed presumably to city requirements, city specifications. I would argue that the road wasn't designed simply for ten homes. The road spec could have accommodated twenty homes or thirty homes. It didn't matter how many homes were on it. You know, it meets a certain width that, you know, meets city code. However, the land that was available to it happened to be ten homes. I would note that there's a couple of other lots still on the property that haven't been developed, including this one. When the project was developed or anticipated in nineteen ninety-one, I, I believe that the only access the property had was out to Lucas Avenue. So when the lot one and lot two were subdivided, they had to provide some type of access to it. And later on, when in two thousand and five, when Blue Stone Court was developed, it created a, give or take a hundred and fifty-foot frontage adjoining this parcel. As, as time went on, obviously, you know, homes were built over, over different times. From what I can find online, they range from three to four-bedroom, two and a half to three and a half bath. And it, that isn't going to be the same as these apartments. The apartments are going to be smaller. They're not going to generate traffic the same as a single-family house would. So with forty-seven units in it, you wouldn't expect the same traffic you would get from forty-seven single-family homes. It's not a, an apples-to-apples comparison. The apartments generate fewer trips per unit because they're smaller. You know, you have fewer, fewer people in them, smaller families, you know, et cetera. So when we analyzed the amount of traffic coming in and out, we went to the Institute of Transportation Engineers, and they compile all different kind of lane uses and put these together. And they had taken a look at, you know, apartments, they have it, you know, as, as, as a classification. And they determined how much traffic will come out on a per-unit basis. And those are the standard methodology procedures we've used to, to estimate this project. And following those procedures, we estimated that this project would generate about twenty-three trips in the morning peak hour and thirty trips in the afternoon peak hour. In comparison to the ten homes that, that are on there, the morning peak hour is about roughly double, you know. So if, if you had about ten cars coming out on Blue Stone Court in the morning today, after the project, it would go up to about twenty-three. And if you had about ten or so in the afternoon, the afternoon has about eleven, it would go up to thirty. So in general, roughly a double to a triple, you know, increase in terms of volume coming in and out. That, that sounds, you know, significant, you know, double to triple. But from a traffic engineering standpoint, how much traffic could you fit in and out of Blue Stone Court before you start to see impacts? If you had five cars on, on Blue Stone Court today and it doubled to ten cars because someone happened to have a birthday party or house party or something like that, you wouldn't immediately call for, you know, needing a traffic signal or widening the road or doing any of those things. And that's the situation that we're in. We've got a low-volume road. It has additional capacity to accommodate more traffic. And we are increasing that traffic to the numbers that I stated. And we took a look at the traffic volumes that Mr. Mafia had diagrammed out in his letter. And we built upon that. We took the traffic from this project. We assigned it to the intersection. We did a detailed analysis. That analysis found that the Blue Stone Court approach, it operates a level surface B in the morning and the afternoon with roughly thirteen seconds of delay. And that delay is representative of what the average delay for a vehicle would, would be to, to come out. Some might be quicker, some might be longer, but that's the average. So we have this existing condition or there's no build condition at thirteen seconds. And then we added in the traffic. Now, traffic volumes, we may have tripled that, but in terms of delay, we only go up by one second. So the approach still operates a level surface B after the project is done. Delays increase by one second. And relative to a detailed analysis, that's not significant. We did explore how much more could we build or put onto, you know, this site? And reasonably, you can't put this number on. But we increased traffic. We increased it by about thirteen hundred to fifteen hundred percent. That means instead of building forty-seven units, we said, well, what if we build two hundred and eighty-five units? What if that was possible? We're talking like seven, eight stories tall buildings. It's not something that would be proposed, but we wanted to explore it. And what we found with that is we would get a five-second increase in delay coming out of Blue Stone Court. So even going from fourteen seconds to like nineteen seconds, that traffic engineering-wise isn't a significant increase. But you can see that the court itself still has a lot of reserve capacity there. It could accommodate a lot more, you know, traffic. Those numbers aren't realistic. No one's proposing that, but it just gives you a little bit of an example. So that letter was submitted to the board this afternoon. I'm sure in the coming days, it'll get circulated and distributed to, to the rest of the board members. Thank you.
Thank you. So, Sue, we have, for the rest of the board too, we have seem to have a conflict between different traffic studies. And I'm not by no means a, a traffic engineer. So Sue, do you have any, do you have any suggestions what might help?
Yeah, I mean, we, we have discussed this. You know, the board does have the option of engaging their own independent traffic consultants to review both studies and provide an opinion back to the board. And that would include, obviously, reviewing Creighton Manning's work, reviewing Mr. Mafia's work, and then possibly undertaking some independent study of their own and then completing and compiling something back to your board. You know, traffic is obviously, traffic and access both are obviously one of the main concerns of everyone involved, including, you know, the board, the applicant, and, and the neighbors. And while we are not traffic engineers, we review them. But I don't know that we have at the city level right now the technical expertise to undertake a quality review that I think should maybe be had in order to make the record clear and, and concise for our, for purposes of seeker.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, this, this is Matt Rudicoff.
Hi, Matt, how are you?
Good, thank you. So this is, you know, a very interesting process to, to observe because, you know, this is, this, the board has to acknowledge when certain impacts just physically can't be significant to the level of what seeker requires. And one of the statements made by, by one of the neighbors was that the purpose of seeker was to investigate every possible impact. Well, that, that's not really the purpose of seeker. It's to identify potentially significant adverse impacts. And so I think that with the traffic is a very good example because the change from a thirteen-second delay to get out of Blue Stone Court and onto Lucas Avenue, that's what exists now. This is not a rural road where people are just rolling right on through to the collector road, which we know has a high volume. This is a one-second delay in waiting time. It's not possible that that's a significant adverse environmental impact. And really, what, what occurs is that we're seeing neighbors, and, and let me say that the comments were well-stated and clearly stated and, and talked about, you know, real issues. But they never described the issues in a way where the potential impacts were rising to the level where they warranted a continuation of a seeker review. Like, for example, on the Indiana bats. You know, there, there are no projects anywhere in this region stopped for Indiana bat reasons. And of course, most people just cut in the allowed cutting period. In our case, we're outside of the allowed cutting period. So we're investigating what the next step is. And that is, just to demonstrate how minimal the potential is for any impact at all, the next step is finding out whether there's a summer hibernaculum within two hundred and fifty feet of the project. That's the next level of testing. Or if there's been a winter or summer occurrence, which is like a sighting of an Indiana bat, within two hundred feet. So these aren't, these are issues that almost never occur. And when we try to obtain information about whether there were occurrences, we get a response that that information isn't released to the public. Because these are endangered species. So this whole issue of Indiana bat is really a, a red herring, and particularly in light of regulations that don't exist. So I think it's important that we see these issues in the context of a very responsive applicant, very open to making changes, good, good changes in response to very good comments in terms of landscaping, in terms of adjusting yards, in terms of reviewing the details of the open space issue and the setback issue, and willing to abide by whatever those issues are. But the indefinite continuing of this process is really not what's, what seeker is about. Certainly, all real questions have to be answered and we'll participate. But I really think on these environmental issues, a lot of these issues have to be dealt with in the way, with, with the motivation of, of, of the, of the people making them.
Wayne, can I jump in for one second here? The specific issue that Sue raised with regard to the traffic study was what we were discussing. While I appreciate what Mr. Rudicoff is saying about the bats, that wasn't the question. We currently have two traffic studies that have come to very different conclusions. And the board is going to have to make factual determinations with regard to those two studies. My only concern with the deciding on an independent study at this point is that we have not heard from our engineer yet. the deciding um on an independent study at this point is that we have not heard from our engineer yet. And, you know, I would um urge the board to wait um to um go that path until our engineer has a chance to look at both studies and identify whether there are specific issues that we need an independent third party for. I think ultimately we are going to need it, but I think the process should be, we receive both. Our engineer should look at both of them. He should chime in and then we should move forward. I believe that given that we have a special meeting weeks, um, you certainly could um very briefly address this at that special meeting and vote at that point based on Mr. Schulteis's review to order the third party review.
Yeah, I, thank you for that insight, Dan. I agree with that. We're, you know, I'm just bringing that to light about, you know, the traffic is a, is a big, is a big issue, it seems um for both sides here. So I think it does, it does make sense to wait for engineering to include that in their findings uh and recommendations. And we can certainly bring it up at our, at our next meeting, the uh special meeting, which we will, we'll be talking about that as well. Uh, the board, actually the board feel good about that? We're gonna let the engineer do his thing and uh come to some conclusions and, and base our decision when that, when that occurs. We're good with that? Excuse me.
Excuse me. Mr. Chairman, Mr. Chairman, this is uh Steve Mafia.
Yes.
I wonder if I could, if I could ask the board, you and the board a question?
Um, well, I would, I would uh, I would, you, you already spoken during the public comment period?
Yes, I just was wondering if I would have the opportunity to review the information that uh Creighton Manning submitted.
Yeah, that's, that's, that's part, that's public, public record. Yes, you, you can do that.
Yeah, absolutely. That, um, there is uh Ken indicated that just came in late this afternoon. So that will be circulated. Um, and it will get posted on the website as well. So probably tomorrow or at definitely by Wednesday, that will be done.
Thank you. I, I would like to uh review it and, and provide some comments if I have any.
Absolutely.
Also, yeah, thank you. Also, is there any response yet from the applicant regarding the um use of uh the existing right of way to Lucas Avenue uh for a full-time access point?
Well, I, I, I'm not gonna speak to that right now. I mean, that was something that was certainly brought up during the, the public comment portion.
Right.
It doesn't mean that we're, I mean, certainly that will probably remain part of the discussions with the applicant. But it's not off the table yet. So I just wanna, you know, it's, it's, it's still out there. So.
Great. I, I understand. Thank you so much. Thank you so much for letting me add a few comments. Thank you.
All right, um, as Dan mentioned, oh, go ahead. Who's, who's, did I interrupt?
Wayne, I just, I just want a clarification then of what you and Dan were thinking. I will certainly follow up immediately with John and try and get comments back. So you were looking to uh possibly just talk briefly about this at next Monday's special meeting? Just to make the decision as to which direction you want to go? Or are we talking about setting a separate special meeting?
I was, I was talking about setting a separate special meeting.
I, I was not. What I was suggesting was that if John can review both traffic studies in the next week um and state an opinion as to whether or not there are enough factual disparities to warrant a third, then we could put it on the agenda for the special meeting next Monday and just take a vote to expedite the process of getting the third opinion.
Okay.
That's what I have interpreted. Thank you.
Okay. All right. That's, that's.
So I assume you're fine with that, assuming that John can chime in in the next couple of days.
Yeah, it would not be a full-blown meeting discussion. It would simply be a discussion as to what John's opinion is and whether or not he thinks that the board should move forward with a, engaging a separate consultant, or if he, he feels that he's confident enough in his review that he can provide the board the guidance that you need.
Correct. I expect that'll be a five or 10 minute conversation at most.
Yes.
And that will be the only aspect of this particular project that we would be discussing at next month's meeting.
Otherwise, it is a special meeting strictly for the Brickyard.
Okay. Then going further into a, a special meeting, what if I was referring to for this particular project? Are we inclined to wanna have a special meeting for this, for this particular project? I mean, is that something that the board feels we should, you know, in between both meet, you know, this month's meeting and next month's meeting?
Well, I think that's premature, given the request for the interpretation that has been submitted to Mr. Kitchen. Given what Mr. Interante has indicated are further modifications to the plan to address the open space issue until we get um the interpretation from Eric, which is not gonna come until the applicant's attorney formally responds to the request for the interpretation and the issues raised to Mr. Gordon. Um, I think we're getting ahead of ourselves.
Okay, I just wasn't sure uh on the timeliness of, of uh of when Mr. of, of Mr. Kitchen was gonna get his interpretation back to us, you know, or, or however that whole process works. So if we have to wait, that's, that's fine. But I, you know, I just wanna keep it out there that we are available to have special meetings for, for, for projects like this. And if, if, if the need arises, we can certainly accommodate that.
And that doesn't mean that there aren't additional issues that this board can and should address this evening, moving through the staff notes. Planning has outlined a whole litany of issues that we can continue to discuss at this point, and we can certainly move the process forward, but I don't expect that, you know, we're gonna come to any kind of resolution with regard to the more global issues.
Right. Okay, I agree. I agree. Okay, um. So what, what are some things we can, we can get off our list tonight, then, as Dan just mentioned? I, I keep going back here. I keep losing my, my staff notes here. I gotta keep going back. I apologize.
That's okay. Well, I mean, I don't know if the board members themselves, um, I'd, I'd open it up to the board members first and say, are there any specific areas of concern or um elements of the discussion? You've had these notes there. They, they're fairly consistent from meeting to meeting. They just get amended and modified and updated as uh we see fit. I, if you want to talk, um, does anybody have any feelings about you know, any of the issues that were brought up tonight? There are questions of the density, which is a major issue. I don't know if the board wants to have any discussion or any opinion on the density that's being proposed right now? The footprint?
Access? And uh if anyone wants to see any of the plans or elevations or specific details, just let me know. I can try to find those and put, put them on the screen.
Hey, this is Matt here. Um, I've been go-
Matt, you're muted. You muted yourself.
How about now? We're back? Okay, there we go. Yes, I've been going through the up or the revised plans that were submitted. And it's, I mean, every square inch of that parcel is being used. And seeing more open space or recreational space would be a nice thing to see, just scale the building down slightly to get just a little more outdoor space for the tenants and occupants there.
Chuck, any thoughts from you? Um, comments on what public has said or your own? Your points?
No, I'm, I'm interested in seeing what they come back with the from the zoning and, and the engineers right now.
Okay.
This is Wayne. Um, I, I know that with uh a number of projects that have come across this board in the past. And I know Sue, you have spoken to this with this particular project uh as far as coming with a plan B for, you know, you, you kinda aim high, shoot low for how many units you actually wanna have in, in a particular project. And I just, you know, and I, I wanna go back to that again to see if, you know, that there's, there is in fact a plan B that if this wasn't working uh and, and the board obviously would, would request that a, a reduction in the number of units would help move this along. I was just wondering if uh the applicants have given any consideration, you know, as to, is there a threshold that makes this project happen or not happen? You know, I've, if, I don't know if Luke or, or Stefan can talk to that.
We, we did, we did make a reduction um since the last revision, reducing it by um two units and then converting the three bedroom into two. So we're actually down to 46, but we, we eliminated the whole footprint of one uh, you know, one uh double story unit. Um, and I guess for us, we would have to go back and, and, you know, think about that. I think our, our real question would be at this point, uh, we would wanna wait for the, for the zoning analysis. And, and if we are meeting zoning, I guess we would question why in that case would we uh, you know, would we wanna concede and, and, and lower the number of units?
And that's fair, that, that is fair for you to say, but I'm just saying, you know, historically, you know, as, as applicants come, come, you know, brick making their presentation to the board, there are times where we have asked for, hey, can you knock a few more units out? How, how would that work? You know, with your, the economics of the project, you know, the feasibility of it. So
We understand that. I think we just have to go back. We haven't really um crunched it down to sort of a minimum number that actually makes the project still feasible, but we can uh, we can look into that.
Okay, no, and I, 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 you know, I, I hope I speak for the rest of the board. That would be appreciated in case, you know, we do get to that point where, you know, that's, that's part of the, you know, that's, that's now the meat of the, of our, of our focus. So you could, you know, I'm not, just talk amongst yourselves with your, with your, with your team and, and see if there's something that that is doable for you at a minimum, you know, where, where you guys can go with that. So that, that's my concern. And, you know, of, of course, uh, the accessibility. Um, I know a lot of folks have raised concerns about the, the access only through Blue Stone Court. And I, you know, I'm still pondering whether or not, you know, Lucas Avenue is a viable, you know, just by itself, an access or an egress. So that's still, I'm still tossing that around, but um, yeah, so those are the, my two main concerns right now. So.
Sue, I'm looking at the uh staff notes with regard to the SWIP and communications with the engineer with regard to other um issues related to runoff, many of which have been addressed by the neighbors. I'm a little confused by the way the um notes are written up. Has the city engineer had an opportunity to review a proposed SWIP at this point? Or where do we stand with that?
Uh, yes, he has um reviewed a proposed SWIP. He did um make the comments that you see in the staff notes. They were sent back. I know Eric is on the line, Eric Chasten from Chasten Engineering. And uh, we, again, we sent these today um back to the applicant for to be addressed, uh, because the engineer, while they had verbal discussions, has not received any response back. Eric did provide a response back today, which will again be that came in this afternoon. That is again gonna get circulated um out. It'll go specifically to the engineer. It'll also go to DPW. But the um board will get it as well.
So John's comments were in essence, this series of questions that he did not opine with regard to the sufficiency of the SWIP. He basically deferred and said he can't until he has answers to these questions.
Correct.
Okay. Did he give you any indication of how long it's gonna take him to make determinations about the sufficiency of the SWIP once he has these answers?
He did not. Well, this, this just came, he gave us these this morning. They went out to the applicant. The applicant responded to them this afternoon. These were the comments that John had provided back in March. He's had conversations with their engineer, but he didn't get any responses back. So we again sent them out. We've received the responses back. I don't, John has not seen the responses yet. They came in late this afternoon. Okay. Um, I do wanna add to um for the record that when the revised plans were submitted this past week, they also submitted a revised uh full environmental assessment form. Um, and that is also currently on the website. So we would encourage board members to take a look at that updated document as well. Um, along with the supporting um explanations that are included in that. Vince, do you have anything? Or Kevin, um, wanna invite you guys into the conversation?
This is Kevin.
This is Vince. Oh, go ahead, Kevin.
Just um, I find it difficult to grasp the entire project concept without more information from all the other department heads first. It just seems we're chasing our tail with all these big questions still outstanding. The Lucas Avenue access, the stormwater, the traffic. There's such big, big questions outside that, that we just don't have answers to yet. So it's tough to get the full, get my arms around the whole project with so many big outstanding issues.
And I concur with what Kevin just said. That was one of the questions I had talked to Sue earlier about was the um egress or the access from Lucas Avenue as well. So there's still a lot of open questions that um we need answers to.
Okay.
In reading all the-
So you indicated in the notes that um you have heard from the school district. Has there been anything more than just initial contact?
Uh, no, the applicants had reached out. We, we directed the applicants to reach out to the school district as a matter of process. That's a normal request that we do when we have multiple residential projects come through. Um, and then the school district reached out to both our office and the assessor's office for some additional information. The assessor's office, they requested if there were any tax abatements being requested. To that answer is no. And to our office, they asked specifically about anticipated number of children. We gave them the unit schedules as revised with the bedroom schedules. So they are working with that information and I, that was last week. So I'm anticipating hopefully soon we'll hear back from them.
Anything else from our board? All right, um. So a couple of things, like I said, we're still waiting for some word back from the, the agencies that we've identified before. Also from zoning. And uh, I mean, if there's no other questions tonight, we can certainly bring up the issue of, of uh what the engineer finds, if that can be, if that can happen by Monday, our special meeting about the Brickyard. So I mean, if there's nothing else to discuss tonight, I think it would be prudent for us to table right now and uh wait for those things to come back.
Wayne, I have a question.
Yes.
The um, Sierra Interaki, the um comments that we're getting from the public, uh, we, we've heard them several times and we know what they are. It doesn't seem, appear to me that there might be any new concerns coming from the general public. In that regard, has the board given any consideration to closing the public hearing and have us work on the comments that were, that were, uh, we've received so far?
Well, I mean, for me, I, I, I'm, I understand what you're saying. But with some of these issues that are still outstanding, I know that at, at times the public comment can, can seem to be repetitive and there's not really much new coming out of the public comment. But until we get these, of these issues, the, the zoning taken care of and then some word back from the engineer, the water department, I would, I would be inclined at least to keep the, the public hearing open for at least another month until the next, until our next meeting. But I understand what you're saying. I share some of the same sentiments that you do. But until some of these issues have been- Um, but until some of these issues have been um addressed and we hear from the other agencies. Um, I'm I'm inclined, and again, this is the rest of the board to decide too, but as my feeling is, I would like to keep it open until at least one more month.
Okay.
I hear you though, okay?
Thanks.
All right, um, does the rest of the board feel the same way with me about that? I or uh?
Wayne, yeah, I I agree with you. Until we get all the answers from the other department heads, there's not much that we can make decisions.
Okay.
It doesn't hurt to leave it open. Hopefully, the general public will realize that certain items have already been. Well, beaten pretty well, so.
I I don't foresee any new information or, you know. Possible comment arising, but if there is, let's just keep it open for at least another month and 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 let that, let that ride, so. But it seems like the rest of the board feels the same way, so. Yeah, Chuck.
Yeah, I don't, I don't see us having enough information back for for next Monday's meeting. And since this project is this large, we may need. To go to a special meeting that just handles just this. I just, I just think it's too big. And then try to jam everything down within a week. I think we need to uh, to set up, not, I don't like all these extra meetings, but we may have to do that.
Yeah, but but next meeting.
The intent, um. Chuck, that the, at the spin, at next week's special meeting, we address all of these issues. Uh, we would only be taking up one, one question, and that would be the traffic. Um, studies and whether or not we feel we can, it can be addressed internally through our current staff at in the engineering. Or if we need to go and look outside, that that's the only question we would be talking about next week. And yes, I do agree with you that this project it rises to the level that the board should consider a special meeting just to. Focus on this project alone.
Yeah, and the only question is when, um, and you know, the real issue is whether or not we're going to be prepared to have the special meeting in May. Or whether it's going to get kicked off to June, and that's really going to depend on the submissions to uh Mr. Kitchen. And how long it takes him to um issue his interpretation and whether or not that interpretation is, you know, ultimately appealed to the CBA. Um, we may have, I I doubt that we're going to be able to have the special meeting in May. My expectation is we're probably talking about June. Um, you know, but I don't think anybody is disagreeing that there will need to be a special meeting to address this project.
Okay. All right, anybody else? Okay, um, I want to thank the applicants for appearing again tonight. I want to thank all of the the speakers who have spoken at the at tonight's public hearing, as well as public hearings in the past. Uh, so at this time, I'll make a motion that we table this uh, this application. Uh, that's a motion. Do I have a second? And also to keep open the public hearing for at least another month? Kevin Roach with a second. Uh, all in favor, Wayne Platt is a yes, uh Chuck Palaco.
Yes.
Kevin Roach.
Yes.
Matt Gillis.
Yes.
Vince Archer.
Yes.
Okay, that is, that is approved, adopted. All right, thank you, everybody.
Thank you, thank you.
Right, folks.
Thank you, board.
Um, all right, that was item eight, was it? Um, that was the last item in the.
Correct, we're on nine.
Okay. Uh, all right, um, item number nine. Anybody here? Let me get back up to it.
Two thirty seven.
Yeah, two thirty seven Fair Street, running new business now. It's a site plan to install a business identification sign. Section block lot is forty eight point three hundred thirty one dash six dash nine, zone O two. It's in the Fair Street Historic District, Heritage Area also. Ward two, the Nakarado Insurance Agency Incorporated is the applicant, A and M Enterprises LLC is the owner. And what do we have here tonight?
John Nakarado, good evening, everyone.
Hey, how are you?
I'm doing good. I haven't attended too many of these meetings. It's an experience.
Yeah, I bet. Um, welcome, welcome.
So I have John Scosa from Designer Signs to actually speak on my behalf because he knows more of the details than I do. On the dimensions and so forth, so on.
Okay.
Hi, John Scosa here.
Hi there, John.
Hello.
Hey there, all right, there we go. We have a visual guy there. John Scosa, can you hear us?
John Scosa, thank you.
John Scosa, are you there?
John, you're muted. There you go. Wait, you keep muting and unmuting, hold on. There you go, okay.
Howdy.
Hello.
So we got a little going here, go ahead.
Uh, we're, we're proposing to install a double sided sign carved, sandblasted and gold leafed to uh. To fit the heritage. Um, style. Um, you see there the picture of it. Um. Uh, what, I don't know what questions, everything was on the application. That we sent in as far as sizes and whatnot.
Right, is this going to be lighted? Is it going to be any lighting on it?
Yeah, there's going to be goosenecks, gooseneck attachments on the pole itself. Okay, with a low light LED shining back down on it.
Okay. And I see that this is going to be on the joint meeting of the Heritage Area Commission and the Landmarks Commission on May sixth, that's coming up, right?
Yes.
I wasn't aware of that.
Okay, well, I see it in my notes, so. So. Put that in your calendar.
Okay.
All right, um, and uh, Sue, you, it's already passed muster with lighting levels and all that stuff here, I see.
Um. Let me just look real quick. Uh, we don't have the lighting details, so.
Do you need that?
We're going to need that.
Okay, and and that's something that can be taken care of at staff level?
I think definitely yes, um, but we should get that as soon as possible because, but the Heritage Commission and Landmarks will also be interested in that.
Yes, Mr. Scosa, you can take care of that for us then?
Yep, that'll, that'll get taken care of.
Okay. Um. Anybody on the board have any questions? Okay, um, so under seeker, this is a type two action and uh. Do we have to, is this, no, this is no review of the board required, right?
Correct.
Okay. All right, um, so at this time, I will make a motion that we approve item number nine. Uh, the applicant will have to submit uh lighting levels and lighting details to for staff approval. And. That's it, Sue, right for that? Nothing else?
Mm-hmm.
Wayne, the only other, sorry, the only other thing, this is Kyla, um, is, I mean, it's an insurance company, but we just need to mention the insurance requirement for the city.
Yeah.
Uh, for overhanging sign.
Okay. So yeah, go ahead.
I'm sorry, and board policies for four A, six, ten and eleven.
Okay. And also favorable review from Heritage Area and Landmark, okay. All right, so that's a big package there. Um, that's a motion to approve and uh, do I have a second on that? Is is Robert back in the mix here?
Yes, he is.
I'm back, I'll second.
Thank you. You're going to second that, Robert? Thank you. Uh, all in favor, Wayne Platt is a yes, Charles Palaco.
Yes.
Robert Jacobson. Matt Gillis.
Yes.
Kevin Roach.
Yes, sir.
Okay, that is approved. John and John, thank you.
Thank you for your time. Appreciate it.
All right, good night.
Take care. Good night. Good night.
All right, moving on, item number ten is the installation of cellular equipment in the public right of way pursuant to City Code, Chapter three fifty eight. Sidewalk Standards, Section nine, Projections and Obstructions. Secret Determination, Ward eight, Verizon Wireless is the applicant, the city of Kingston is the owner. Um. Uh, Sue, where, this is by the S turn on Delaware Avenue down by the wall, but.
Yeah, if you look in your staff notes, um, Kyla had included a location map that was submitted as part of the. Uh, there she goes, she's bringing it up, so this is, um, you can see the location of the pole. Right at that L bend, that ninety degree bend pretty much on Delaware Avenue going down the hill. Just past Hasbrook Park and the Business Park going.
This is a new one for us, isn't it?
This is new, correct, yes, this is a pole that is being replaced by Central Hudson. I believe Scott Olson is on the phone for this or on the.
Correct, I'm here.
There you go.
Hi. Good, how are you?
Good, thank you.
Good.
All right, so what is this going to accomplish for you folks here?
It's going to um accomplish two things for our network. We, right now. We have capacity issues in the city of Kingston. Because of each site can only handle so much or a finite number of users at any given time. By putting this site in, it'll help relieve capacity from our other Kingston site that is really uh. Overused right now, and it'll give us some additional footprint for our service. Um, we provided some information in the application that shows a pictorial representation. Uh, I could show you that. Um. Or that's, those are the site plans. I could share my screen if that's.
Um, yeah.
Something you would like me to do and.
Me too, hold on.
Okay, yeah, I see.
Okay.
All right, let me just. Find where this is. Okay, now I'm not seeing, hang on one second.
It's so it's really a small, it's a small canister looking device, right? There's nothing. Attrusive with that or offensive, it's just.
Yeah, absolutely right, and for some reason, this PowerPoint that I have is not coming up, so. I don't understand why, but I'll. Talk through it. It's it's a single, right now, you currently have that utility pole is thirty two feet, thirty two feet, thirty two and a half feet tall. We want to extend it by six feet to bring it up to thirty eight and a half feet, because we have some equipment which this shows right now. You see, there's the antenna, well, I can't, it's not my screen, but the antenna is about midway down. I think it's at the twenty two foot mark. Exactly right there. Below that, there'll be some extra equipment that we have. All the equipment will be located on the pole itself. And if I could share this screen. Oh, we did provide, here we go. I hope for this will help. This will just have some pictures that'll show you, some simulations that look, that give you a good idea. So, this is the existing pole that we're proposing to replace. The next picture I'm going to show you is a simulation. Of what it'll look like being taller and with the antenna. It's hard to see because it blends in with the sky, but the antenna is right there. Some additional equipment is there. Um. And that's just looking east to southeast, and if you go from the other direction. This is the pole again, it's an actual picture, and then. We had the simulation of that. It goes up again, six feet in height. The antenna. Um, is actually, you can't see it right there. This is the equipment. I'm sorry, that's the antenna. And so the beauty of this is we get. Improved capacity, improved coverage, all on a utility pole while minimizing any really adverse aesthetic impacts.
Okay.
What it, what it accomplishes essentially is, if you look at this. Kingston Point, that's, you know, our site is right here. Yellow is really not the greatest signal strength. And this shows you dark green is fantastic. It's a really good signal strength in green, so you can kind of see what we're doing. We're increasing the footprint of our signal strength also.
Okay.
So.
And that additional is basically, it's a little bit smaller than your traditional transformer tub, right? That you would see from Central Hudson, just a little lower.
Yeah, and actually, you're very correct, they're smaller also. You know, sometimes you see these three gang transformers that are pretty big. This is, the antenna is like two feet tall. And about eighteen inches, give or take uh in width.
Okay. All right, any questions from the board? Okay. Thank you for your presentation there.
You're welcome.
Um, so, under seeker, it's an unlisted action, so. You have a short form for me, Kyla, that that has been.
Uh, I do. Do you want me to try to locate that to show it on the screen is?
Oh, I want to, I just. Want to make sure, and it's, it's in order, I would imagine.
I actually, this uh, this would be unlisted, correct, Sue?
Yes.
Because it's an antenna, okay, yes, uh, we, and we have reviewed it. We don't see any, any issues with.
So at this time, I'll make a motion that we approve the uh short environmental assessment form. Uh, do I have a second on that?
Kevin Roach, second.
That's good by Kevin Roach. This is just for the seeker now. All in favor, Wayne Platt is a yes, Charles Palaco.
Yes.
Robert Jacobson. Matt Gillis.
Yes.
Kevin Roach.
Yes.
Okay, that is approved. Um, so, uh, at this time, we'll make a motion that we, there's no. There's no uh, terms on this, so it's, if the equipment changes, they got to come back, right? Is that what we do? Okay, so at this time, I'll make a motion that we approve item number ten with uh board policy six. Uh, that will need to be signed on the final plans.
And Wayne add the insurance, naming the city as additionally insured.
Okay, and uh, you can help the applicant with that, right? Whatever he needs to go with that, okay, we'll add that in this to the the motion as well. Uh, do I have a second on that? Second by Robert Jacobson, uh, all in favor, Wayne Platt is a yes, Charles Palaco.
Yes.
Robert Jacobson.
Yes.
Matt Gillis.
Yes.
Kevin Roach.
Yes.
Okay, that is approved.
Great, thank you very much. Have a great evening.
Take care, sir.
You too, thank you.
All right, item number eleven is thirty six Saint James Street. It's a site plan to renovate and. Establish a mixed use building with two apartments on the upper floors. And commercial slash office slash light manufacturing below. Section block lot is fifty six point ninety two dash four dash fourteen. Speaker determination, zone C two, ward four, Paul Biker. Family signs of Kingston is the applicant, Keegan Kingston Realty Corp is the owner. What do we have here tonight, Sue?
I think Paul Biker is with us.
Hello there.
Paul?
Oh, you're muted.
I think so, maybe you can't hear me?
Now we can hear you.
There we go.
It's the distance issue, I guess. Do you want me to share my screen and go through this, or does Kyla have the PDF?
I can make you, um, I can give you permission, hold on. Okay, you're good.
Okay, um. Basically, um, this building is adjacent to our building, one fifty four Clinton Avenue. And it has been part of um, the Keegan Ailes uh property. Uh, Tom has used it for a warehouse uh for many years. Um. And uh. We had an opportunity to purchase this for uh. And we had an opportunity to purchase this for, from Tom, and are looking to make some changes to it. Currently, we're working with Scott Dutton, who's going to be doing the drawings. He suggested we just basically introduce the project to the planning board tonight, and I believe with any luck, we'll have a site plan in the next month or so to show you guys to get started on the official. Is that, everybody hear me okay?
It's a little light, but.
Okay, let me, um, just increase how's that? Good?
Much better.
Okay. Um, we'll just go through here, the, the applica, the application required us to just show a little map to where these photos were taken, so I'm going to show you the existing conditions. This is the aerial, this is the front of the building currently. This is the side elevations composed of three separate structures, I guess it was added to over time. This is the back, the spaces, the side of our building at 154 Clinton Avenue. Um, these are some of the planned improvements we're looking to do here, which is remove the wood shakes, new windows. The signage will go away for now. There's a tacked-on wood canopy that doesn't really fit the architecture, we'd like that to go. We're planning on doing new storefront glazing, entry doors. Probably painting the brick, restoring the steps, railings on the front. Pretty much the same with the side. We want to rebuild that shed, clean up the fascia. We're going to open up some of these existing locked-in window openings for more light into the middle section of the building. And replace the doors and probably make these two entry platforms look consistent. And on the back, same thing, some of these windows, there's an apartment up top and you can, I don't know if you can see from the graffiti, but there's a warehouse loading dock that Tom uses for beer storage, that'll stay. Again, just new paint, some of the siding is in rough shape, we're going to be fixing that. This is kind of some ideas that we've been working with and showed with Scott, some of the looks we're going for. Primarily black window frames, white or neutral paint. Just kind of clean and simple. Probably with a lot of the elements here. Any of those roof overhangs will probably be done with, you know, standing seam metal awnings. We'd like to put in some receptacles to store trash, to conceal those things for the tenants. And, you know, new entry doors. Uh, this is just a historic photo of the original foundry that was here, and you can see Keegan Ailes building and 36 St. James are, are the only buildings still present. The rest has all been leveled and now that's parking lot, so those are the last two standing buildings. And we have a kind of a family connection to this property. My, my uncle PJ in the 1930s ran a Hupmobile dealership out of this location. And so it's kind of interesting. Friends of a Store Kingston was able to track down this information. Among many other tenants of that building, my PJ was my grandfather's older brother. Newt Biker's older brother, so he was quite a car dealer in the 30s, 40s, 50s, 60s. So we're thinking, you know, we might name it the Southern Biker Building because that was the name of his business. So, that's, that's pretty much it. I mean, obviously, we, we have a lot of work to do in terms of the site plan and we're going to split the lower part of the building into probably three individual tenant spaces with separate electric, separate plumbing, all of those improvements. The two upper apartments will stay, but they'll, will probably renovate those as the tenants change. And of course, we still have to close on the building, so I think Tom Keegan's on this call. I don't know if you have any questions for me, he is the current owner. My brother and I will be the owner, we're into a real estate contract right now, so.
Yep, I'm on this call. Am I muted or not muted? I don't even know.
And we can hear you.
Oh, okay. Yeah, I'm here if you have any questions for me, I am the owner, but everything Paul says is right on track with what we've been talking about forever.
All right, thank you. Um, is the, the apartments upstairs, are they going to be reconfigured at all, Paul, or is Scott working on something with that, or are they going to remain the same? I'm not sure what the layout is up there, but.
I believe there's a two-bedroom, one-bath in the front of the building and a one-bedroom, one-bath in the rear of the building. There really is no reconfiguration planned of that. If anything, I'd like to redo the bathroom for the front tenant in there at some point. Purely cosmetic, and in the back apartment, if the current tenant moves out, we would probably do another cosmetic renovation of that and whatever associated building permits. The only thing we'd probably like to add up there is heat pump, mini-split for AC, I think there's window.
Mostly cosmetic work, though, nothing majorly structural, I don't believe.
Okay. And the lot line revision that we took care of earlier takes care of the parking for this place too, correct?
Yeah, that is the reason we did the lot line revision, because we
Right.
we need, we require parking.
Okay. And the parking area is going to remain gravel, is it?
Uh, for now, yes, we do have plans to after, at some point, pave it.
Okay. Okay. Sue, you have anything? Anything else that we?
I know, I know that Paul had said that we possibly would just be looking at this, but I feel confident enough that, you know, with the information that he has submitted, that the final items can just get returned to staff level. And we will work with both the applicant and his architect to, you know, refine any of those details. We would also have some board policies attached, but the final exterior designs, I think, can come to staff for review and sign-off as well as just the minor landscaping and signage detail, as long as it's conforming with the signage regulations under zoning. I think that we could be, you know, charged with that instruction, and then the access easement, again, should have to come back to the board for the record, so.
Okay. And there's already been, the, the short environmental assessment form has already been completed, right?
Yes, I believe so.
Okay, I'm comfortable with having these outstanding issues handled at staff level. Is anybody on the board opposed to that? That'll save the applicant another trip from having to come back here.
Evan Roach, I agree with you, Wayne.
Okay.
This is Matt, I agree, looks like a great project.
Yeah, yeah.
Definitely going to be a project.
It's nice to get it back in the family, right?
That's right, that is true.
And I remember talking to Newt too, like, he's, he used to do our sign, or stuff printing for the fire department back in the day, so.
Yep, yep. I, I didn't realize how many dealerships PJ Biker actually had. I'll forward on to you via email, he has a list, when he retired, they ran an ad in the Freeman, and it was just a laundry list of all the cars and all the dealerships, so. I guess, I just didn't realize that he had one at 36 St. James. I was familiar with the one across the, from Uptown, but but he had a long history of dealing cars.
Okay. Anybody have any questions? Any other questions?
No.
Okay, um. So there's going to be some policies applied to this, Paul. We're going to have, we'll illustrate that in the in the, the vote here, but first we'll do the seeker. We do have a completed short environmental assessment form, and it is in order. So at this time, just for the seeker purposes, I'll make a motion that we approve that. Do I have a second on, this is Wayne Platt, do I have a second?
Chuck Palaco, yes.
Okay, Chuck Palaco is a second, all in favor, Wayne Platt is a yes, Charles Palaco?
Yes.
Robert Jacobson?
Yes.
Matt Gillis?
Yes.
Kevin Roach?
Yes.
All right, the stat is approved. And at this time, I will make a motion that we approve item number 11 with Board Policies 6, 10, 11, 22, 25, and 26. I think, Sue, that's the first time I've ever listed any of the board policies in any, anything I've ever done before, so that's a first.
I would, I would say add in 17A.
Yes, I see that.
Right registration, and I would just also, I just thought about adding in 4 and 4A only because they would deal with lighting, if lighting.
Okay, we'll add those in as well. And Paul, one of those item, the, the policies is 25, which is installation of a knox box, so we have, there's a lot of those throughout the city for after-hours access, all right? So that is a motion. Do I have a second?
Chuck Palaco, second.
Right, Chuck Palaco is a second, so all in favor, Wayne Platt is a yes, Charles Palaco?
Yes.
Robert Jacobson?
Yes.
Matt Gillis?
Yes.
Kevin Roach?
Yes.
All right, that is approved. Paul, thank you so much, good luck with this.
Thank you, be in touch, appreciate your help.
Okay, pal, take care. All right, moving on to item number 11 is 500 Washington Avenue. It's a site plan to convert a maintenance and storage building into a one-bedroom apartment. Section block allotted is 5, excuse me, 48.71-1-3, Speaker Determination Zone R6, Ward 2, J Dutch Village LLC is the applicant owner. Do we have some folks from Dutch Village here tonight?
Paul Chankovitz.
Hey, Paul.
Hi, how are you?
Good, good. All right, so I know they converted the front building into some apartments already. What, what do you got now for us on this?
This is, Kyla, can you bring up the site plan, please? And this is a small maintenance building adjacent to Washington Avenue. It's been unoccupied, they tried to fit this up and I believe the building department shut them down. So I'm here tonight to make this legal. It's an 800-square-foot building, 20 by 40, it's just in a parking lot. There will be no impact to existing parking, we're not adding parking, we're not adding, cutting down any trees, not changing the site at all. It's just changing the use of this building from a maintenance building to a one-bedroom apartment. Physically, the outside will look same as it does today. We're removing the overhead door, adding a single door on the, that would be the southeast side of the building and where we have louvers in the sidewalls, we're changing those windows. And that's the extent of the work. There exists right now 139 units, so bring it up to 140. There's about 198 parking spaces, some in the open and some underneath the apartments themselves. I don't believe that this will really impact parking, that we need to add anything to to the parking areas because my survey showed a great percentage of the parking was open.
Paul, is this going to be a handicap accessible unit or adaptable unit?
It is because it, it's right on, on the same elevation as the paved area. So it can accommodate handicap.
All right. Um, also I have on here, where is the equipment going to be stored after this building is converted? Do they have a plan to move that stuff?
Yeah, the equipment is already moved out of this building. As I said, they started to remodel. They removed sections of the slab, they started putting in some plumbing, underground utilities and so forth. So what they've done is they've taken this equipment or the vehicles that were stored in that building and storing it in the garages underneath the units themselves.
All right, and Sue, I see here there's a note about rec fees. This qualifies for that?
Yes, it does, so, well, it would only be for this one single unit, though.
Right, okay. Paul, your, your clients are aware of that?
Yes, I already told them what the fee was.
Okay. Anything else, Sue, that we've missed?
Um, no, I'm trying to work out an email with Dan right now, but just the board policies. I think everything else is pretty straightforward.
Okay, they do have a knox box on, on site already, so we can eliminate number 25.
That was a question we were going to ask you.
Yeah. Does anybody on the board have any questions?
That looks good to me.
All right, okay. Like I said, they converted that front building into more, more units, so good, all right. All right, so under seeker, this is an unlisted action. So we have to render a determination of environmental significance. We do have a short form completed, Kyla or Sue?
Kyla? Yes.
Okay. All right, um, so at this time, I'll make a motion to approve the short environmental assessment form. Do I have a second?
Second, Kevin Roach.
Second by Kevin Roach, all in favor, Wayne Platt is a yes, Charles Palaco?
Yes.
Robert Jacobson?
Yes.
Matt Gillis?
Yes.
Kevin Roach?
Yes.
Okay, that is approved. All right, um, so at this time, I'll make a motion that we approve item 12. Sue, do you want to go over the, the list there that?
It would be Board Policy 6, 17A, 18, which is the rec fee of $3,000 for the one unit, and 22.
Okay, and also the submission of the recreation fee, right?
Right, that was 18.
Oh, that's 18, okay.
But I, I mentioned it, yes, 3,000.
All right, um, okay, so that's a motion, do I have a second?
Second, Kevin Roach.
Second by Kevin Roach, all in favor, Wayne Platt is a yes, Charles Palaco?
Yes.
Robert Jacobson?
Yes.
Matt Gillis?
Yes.
Kevin Roach?
Yes.
Okay, that is approved. Thank you, Paul, good seeing you, pal.
All right, thank you, thanks.
All right, have a good night.
You too.
Item number 13. 79 Hurley Avenue. Site plan to renovate and redevelop an existing building into a mixed-use commercial slash office building. Section block allotted is 48.71-2-11, Speaker Determination Zone C2, Ward 1, Higginsville Station LLC is the applicant owner. Scott, Scott here for this?
I'm here.
Yes, he is. Brian is as well.
Yeah, I'm here as well, yeah.
Okay. Um, all right, so this is the Daily Freeman Building, can I see? Scott, you didn't, you want to, I know, this is probably like, almost like a gateway meeting for this, right? Just an overview of what you plan on doing there, what, what the plan is?
Correct, and it's been a long night for you all, so we'll be brief tonight. Correct, and it's been a long night for you all, so we'll be brief tonight. Bob and I bought this building back in 2017. We expected that we wouldn't be before you were aboard for at least a few years from now, but then the pandemic hit, the Daily Freeman contracted. And while we had mused about potential adaptive reuse opportunities there, since we purchased it, we had to focus and get an application together and start really thinking about this. We petitioned the common council for a rezoning request. That rezoning request was approved recently. And once that rezoning request was approved, we started, you know, letting the local community know that we had this asset. We saw the opportunity, and we've got some very exciting prospects for for new tenants there, and we're here before the board to present a multi-tenant adaptive reuse project for you to consider.
Okay. So really, this is really preliminary right now, Scott? It's just like a?
Correct.
We still have to go before, this still has to be referred to the Oyster County Planning Board.
Correct.
Okay. All right.
We assumed that this was one of a couple of meetings, but wanted to introduce it. Not many people realize that the Daily Freeman had contracted during COVID. You know, Bob and I have been working vigorously to, you know, try and reimagine the building. We think we're going to be successful in bringing vibrancy to that building. And we're incredibly excited about it, sort of making really good lemonade out of some lemons that were dealt us during the pandemic.
Okay. So really, we're not going to look at any floor plans or anything like that tonight, right? We're just gonna?
Kyla, you could certainly.
Yeah, that's up to you. I do have them ready to share. I didn't know how.
The floor plan's pretty well baked. What you're lacking, Wayne, is a fully developed landscape plan.
Okay.
You know, requisite site details. You can see, this was a single-tenant building for as long as I've been in Kingston, which is about 25 years. Over time, as they moved the printing presses out and contracted and contracted and contracted, you know, the Daily Freeman left just more and more space vacant, but they were a single-tenant occupant of the building. We purchased the building from a holding company that owned, you know, hundreds of newspaper properties around the country. So this is in no way a reflection of the local Daily Freeman folks that we've known for all our lives. We have a brew pub tenant, a distiller tenant, bike shop tenant, a small grab-and-go fast casual food tenant that we were deep into negotiations with. We're looking to activate the site. Given its proximity to Deed Stadium, you know, right off of Washington Avenue, trailways right off the thruway, we think we can really, you know, make it a destination. And it has something that most of the properties in, in the denser areas of Uptown Kingston don't have, and that's easy in-and-out access and abundance of parking and an adjacency to the O&amp;W rail trail.
Okay. All right. Sue, you have anything else here?
No, I was, yeah, I mean, I like the plan. I think it's a great idea, good concept for that area. And I would like to, basically, we will extend our staff notes to the applicants so that they can work on addressing those. When they return, they should be pretty much, I think everything should be in order.
Okay, and we've made the submission to the Oyster County Planning Board already?
No, it will have to be referred to the county.
Okay. Will that be at next meeting, then we do that, or have we?
We can refer it now, I think.
Yeah, Scott, once you have, you know, the details for the site plan and whatever, you know, whatever you're putting together, we can send that as soon as we have a package.
I will say that we've been working closely with Dennis Doyle for the last year and a half on this project. The county did weigh in on the rezoning. They're very supportive as well. We've just been waiting for some of the little details to kind of chink in, so we can start to focus on the signage details, the lighting, the landscaping. But the overall concept, the parking analysis, that's already been submitted. It's, you know, it's the ancillary stuff that we should be well-placed to reconcile over the next couple of weeks. Have you in a very comfortable place, we hope.
Okay, good.
We're super excited about this, and not, not many people know about this, and so this is sort of our our first, you know, our first public airing of this project.
Well, they got a couple of good point people on this thing, so you and Bob together, so that speaks volumes, so. All right, so I guess we'll be waiting to hear more about this, and anybody have any questions from the board? Okay. Thanks for hanging around with us tonight, Scott and Bob.
I'm just texting Charlie Blakeman to, to show up.
Thank you, thank you for your consideration. Appreciate it.
So at this time, I'll make a motion that we table item 13. Do I have a second?
Second, Charles Palaco.
Second by Chuck Palaco. All in favor. Wayne Platt is a yes. Charles Palaco?
Yes.
Robert Jacobson? He's a yes. Matt Gillis?
Yes.
And Kevin Roach?
He's muted, yes.
Okay, all right, so we're tabled. Thank you, folks.
Thank you, guys.
All right. Moving on to item number 14.
Charlie has just joined us.
Okay, 59 Pearl Street in Perrin's 236 Wall Street. Site plan to establish professional office spaces and an event space, section block allotted is 56.91-3-1. Speaker determination, zone O2. It's an heritage area. Ward two, Charles Blakeman of Kingston Ops 2 LLC is the applicant owner. Mr. Blakeman and Scott Dutton are here. Welcome again.
Thank you. Wayne, I just sent Charlie a text asking him to unmute.
Yeah.
You on your side.
All right.
Scott, is he on the phone right now?
I think he's on.
Okay, it looks like, it looks like he might have unmuted.
There he is. He's good.
Charlie.
Charlie? He is unmuted.
Charlie, are you there? It's been a long night. I don't, I don't want to hold up the board while Charlie works on that. Want to get started, Wayne?
Yeah, go ahead, Scott.
Okay, so this is the former St. Joseph's School building. There are two St. Joseph's School buildings. One, the historic building at the corner of Wall Street and Pearl Street. The other, the more contemporary 1960s building that Robert Milliken actually designed, but this is the three-story building on a historic building right behind St. Joseph's Church. Charles purchased the building, I want to say about two years ago. And we have recently been before the zoning board of appeals and obtained a variance. It was a little bit unusual in that most applicants go to the zoning board of appeals for an area variance seeking a full waiver for parking. What we presented to the zoning board of appeals was an opportunity to provide the requisite parking, but it was more than 400 feet from the building. We provided adequate parking and demonstrated that at the 16 Lucas Avenue site that most of you know as the Family Court Building. Our request tonight is quite simply to convert the former classrooms to professional office space. And ultimately, we would like to use the top floor of the building, which is an amazing space. It's remarkably intact and worth a site visit for anybody that's interested in going to see it for, for events. But given that the zoning board of appeals approved the parking variance for the office space, tonight we're only requesting site plan approval for the office space, but wanted to be fully transparent that we do plan to come back with a fully baked plan for the third floor. So, Kyla, if you flip to the floor plans. That is the.
I skipped over the, do you want the existing?
No, that's fine.
I went right to the proposed.
That's fine. That's the Shirley level. It's partially below grade, partially above grade. There are, there are two spaces that are available there to the top of your screen. You go one sheet forward. This is the what we call the first floor. It's half a flight up from Wall Street. And you can see that there are four classrooms. And we're proposing to use those as professional office space. I can tell you, you know, firsthand experience, there's a huge demand for this type of space in the marketplace. You know, we filled up the Fuller Building faster than I ever thought we would fill it up, and I have been turning away, on average, about two people a week that are looking for 500 to 800-square-foot professional office spaces. So given that this Kingston is the county seat, I think there's, there will always be a tremendous need for professional office space adjacent to the courts. You know, just given the vibrancy that we're starting to see in Uptown Kingston. A lot of interest in smaller professional offices. So you've got four on this floor. You've got four on the second floor. And then the event space that we'll be bringing back to you in short order with a, you know, with a full synopsis of how we intend to handle valet parking and, you know, all of those details. But, but that space is just magnificent, so. But, Kyla, if you scroll back one sheet. Straightforward, double-loaded corridor. Maintaining the existing historic architecture. There is, in the lower right-hand corner, a new elevator that's proposed, and that would have an accurate access to the exterior. But other than that, very modest improvements to the interior and almost no changes to the exterior, other than creating the entrance for handicapped accessibility for the elevator.
Scott, the bathrooms for these individual offices, the majority of them are going to be using the shared bathroom facilities on the ground floor?
I would assume so. And then there are, you know, individual bathrooms that are grandfathered in those spaces that, you know, we would maintain and if we need to come back and make modifications at any point.
Okay.
More bathrooms upstairs.
Charlie, oh, good, you're with us. Thank you.
I think we'll probably place some more bathrooms upstairs and.
I would think, yeah. In, right, when you come back, yeah, definitely, if you're going to, it's going to be event space. Parking, Scott, you said that you were going to go and you're going to be using that parking on Lucas Avenue, the old Family Court. We had had a site plan that showed improvements that were going to be made there. Do you have a time schedule now that a lot of these buildings are coming online? Is there a time schedule that you can provide the board with completing those improvements? There was landscaping and some other elements that we haven't seen happen yet?
Yes, we plan to start that in the next, I would say, start in the next month, and it shouldn't take more than about a month, a month and a half, two months the most to get.
Yeah, we helped Charlie get bids on that work just before the pandemic started, and then, you know, naturally, everything went into caution mode.
Yeah, the winter, sort of, it was a pretty strong winter, so my contractor got really backed up with a lot of various emergency kind of work, but should get started shortly.
Okay, great. That's good news. Thank you.
Guys, do you expect to have something for us regarding your event space, what your plans are there by maybe next month, or where are you with that?
Well, Charlie, let me jump in here. I would prefer to kind of bifurcate those two requests if the board is okay with that. Just because the building's sat vacant for so long, there's so much demand for that space. We'd like to limit this. The ZBA parking variance was limited to the business occupancy. That's been granted. So if we could get that approved by the planning board, that would allow Charlie to start generating some revenue and give us, you know, ample time to to present the event space the way I know you want it presented.
Okay.
But in anticipation that it would be very soon, in the coming months, but I'd hate to delay his opportunity to lease those spaces. And I know that there are a number of people that are anxious to see how the board rules tonight, hoping that they might be able to see themselves in, you know, move their offices into those classrooms.
All right.
Got signage for the occupancies?
Honestly, we have not figured out a signage plan.
It'll probably be more like a directory in the building or in front of the building, but small, you know, not, nothing large, I don't think, outside. We're not anticipating that unless somebody comes up and says they want the whole building, and then maybe there would be something to indicate that, but other than that, I think it'd be more discreet.
So, Sue, this still has to be referred to the county, correct?
Yes.
I think we could come up with a signage package very quickly. We've historically, Charlie's historically worked with timely signs. We all know that they do a great job. We all know that they do a great job and we could get something submitted to staff to forward to the county.
What is the excuse me, just so I understand, what does the county weigh in on? Just curious.
It's just that what if this had would have any county impact.
Oh.
Basically, which I I don't anticipate any. I think they'll probably be supportive of it. It's a good adaptive reuse of the building.
Charlie, it's it's jurisdictional. There are certain guidelines within when you're within a certain number of feet of a county road when.
Okay, just didn't. Know what that was about. So right now, so we're in a position just to table until we get some feedback from the county and.
Um, I don't know. I I mean, I would be comfortable if if the board is okay with it. You know, I don't know, you know, the only outstanding items really are the signage and the lighting. If there would be any exterior lighting, I imagine just some basic lighting on the front walk or front steps of the building, maybe in the back as well. And there's refuse and recycling, which I think we could handle at staff level. It's up to the board if you want them to come back next month or let the board handle the balance of the submissions.
The staff, you mean, handle the balance?
For office space only. Obviously, the event space would come back.
Yeah, but I mean, do we, what about with the with the having to be referred to county? Do we? I mean, if they if they come back with some recommendations, then we have to revisit it, right?
Yes.
And that would go back to the board.
Correct.
If the board would consider it tonight, we'd be most appreciative, subject to the county's recommendations.
Okay. I'm okay with that. Robert, you good?
Yeah, I'm good. When do we expect the county comments?
Uh, well, they will meet the first Wednesday of May, so would be shortly thereafter.
But if we if they come back with comments on the first Wednesday of May after, will we have enough time for public notice in order to put this on for May? Or should we just put it on for now?
I mean, we can.
I just don't want I don't want the applicant to get stuck pigeonholed.
Put it on for now, and then if the county doesn't have any comments, then it just gets taken off the agenda?
Yeah.
Yeah, I just I'd want to make sure that whatever notices we send out, they're on they're timely that we can discuss tonight if we have to.
Okay, I'm good with that.
And we can follow up at that meeting and share with the board our signage proposal. That I suspect would be approvable at staff level, but we'd be happy to present it that night.
Okay. All right, and and we do have the the short form there, Kyla submitted?
Yes, we do.
Okay. All right, so let's do the seeker right now then. Has anybody else had any questions on the board? No, okay, all right. So we do have a short environmental assessment form that has been submitted and is it is in order. At this time, I'll make a motion that we approve it. Do I have a second?
Second, Chuck.
Second by Charles Palaco, all in favor. Wayne Platt is a yes. Charles Palaco?
Yes.
Robert Jacobson? Matt Gillis?
Yes.
Kevin Roach?
Yes.
All right, that is that adopted, that's approved. So at this time, I will make a motion that we approve item number fourteen. So which is only for to establish the professional office spaces at this time, correct?
Correct. If you'd like, I can read the conditions. They would.
Yeah, one's for that, please.
Board policy six, ten, fifteen, nineteen, twenty-three, twenty-five, and twenty-six. This would only be for the office space on the lower level, the first and second floors. The item will be placed on the agenda so that if necessary, they need to come back for Ulster County Planning Board comment. But staff will handle all lighting, landscaping, signage, refuse, and recycling detail.
Okay, sounds good. That is a motion, part of the motion. Do I have a second on that?
Add seconds.
Second by Matt Gillis, all in favor. Wayne Platt is a yes. Charles Palaco?
Yes.
Robert Jacobson? Matt Gillis?
Yes.
Kevin Roach?
Yes.
All right, that is approved. Okay, Scott and Charles, thank you for coming. Good.
Late night, really. All right, take care.
All right, as I had mentioned in the beginning of the meeting, item fifteen is two hundred North Street. That's going to be taken up at the special meeting next Monday, so that is not on the agenda. Uh, tonight. We also have item sixteen, the rezoning recommendation. It's a referral from the common council to amend zoning code section four oh five dash nine. Parent C, parents D, and parents H. Uh, dealing with accessory apartments and section four oh five dash thirty-four, parents J, off-street parking and loading.
Dan had emailed everybody during the meeting, the state assembly bill.
Okay.
You can open up your emails.
Well, let me get started while you're all checking to see if the email came through. What I sent you was a link to the New York State Assembly Bill with regard to accessory dwelling units. The state, the federal government, and the county in recognition of a nationwide housing crisis has started pursuing initiatives to increase the housing stock by mandating that localities address and eliminate impediments to accessory dwelling units. The Biden administration has introduced regulations and legislation to address impediments that exist in current zoning codes that limit the expansion of housing opportunities. The state legislature has proposed the specific legislation that I have forwarded to you that requires municipalities to remove impediments to accessory dwelling units. The county in their housing report has similarly focused on the need to remove impediments to accessory dwelling units. Our council, furthered mostly by Alderman Hirsch, has been attempting to move our city forward with regard to this issue. Basically, to get ahead of the curve. The this board has repeatedly and regularly dealt with impediments to, you know, accessory dwelling units. We had one earlier this evening that are based upon a certain provisions in the code that, quite frankly, are not only difficult to interpret, but impossible to determine what the purpose was in the first place other than to restrict a property owner's ability to have an accessory dwelling unit. We have started with smaller steps or attempted to start with smaller steps that don't go nearly as far as either the state legislation would require or nearly as far as the county is urging us to pursue. But we believe that this is an appropriate place to start. One thing I would note for for the board is that according to the state, the proposed state legislation, if it's adopted, it would render all limitations in local zoning codes that inhibit accessory dwelling units to be void on their face. The state legislation also indicates that there can be no additional parking requirements for accessory dwelling units and that any currently existing restrictions with regard to parking that limit accessory dwelling units are also void. So again, this is our attempt to start this process slowly. It has been put in front of the council. It will be in front of the council at laws and rules on Wednesday evening. And the process begins with referrals out to county planning, city planning, the Historic Landmark Preservation Commission. Again, it's my understanding that county planning is in the process of preparing their response. Again, my understanding is that they believe we are not going far enough. We are trying to do this in, you know, in in a slower fashion in order to get the community ready for and used to bigger changes that are most likely coming down the bike.
But the state hasn't passed anything.
State has not passed anything at this juncture.
And the state has been known to discuss things for long periods of time without passing.
Absolutely. And it's it and it is my understanding from discussions with the council that the council's interest in adopting these changes is while it's certainly consistent with the state legislation and furthers the state legislation, the interest is in doing this either way.
In all zones?
In all zones, yes. Recognizing the extent to which the current zoning code unequally addresses accessory dwelling units and the ability of property owners to expand housing opportunities.
But where, I mean, where are the controls for other neighbors and neighborhoods that may not want this?
Your site plan review by the planning board. There would still be a requirement that there would be a special permit issued by the planning board. This would remove the current impediments in the code or a significant number of the impediments and give the property owner the opportunity to come to this board and sell their proposal. But there would still be site plan approval and they would still need a special permit. One of the issues that the county has raised and that the state legislation addresses is precluding the municipality from requiring special permits. Our proposal at this point still requires the special permit and still requires the site plan approval. So it still leaves it up to you.
And just for argument's sake, if a plant, if you had a neighborhood that came forward, I mean, we had this actually about a year or two ago on North Manor Avenue. If all the neighbors came forward, we bought the single-family residence. We don't want accessory structures. We don't want absentee landlords. If we're not supposed to look at parking and we're not supposed to look at limited housing, what is a situation where a planning board would be able to say, no, this, we don't feel this is a good idea under the special permit request?
Well, the let, you know, the proposal doesn't say you're not supposed to look at parking and you're not supposed to look at density. The proposal says that the that they are not impediments to the application proceeding. The planning board, still in the process of reviewing site plan and reviewing the site, the special permit application, still necessarily has to consider those issues, at least under the current structure in our code. If the state legislation goes through, that's going to be seriously curtailed. Okay, but our proposal at this point is just to remove the impediments so that the applicants can come to this board and try to sell their proposal, and you can make a determination whether it's appropriate under the circumstances.
Dan, I think maybe we should just talk about the specifics with this. This proposed change, because the state legislation that you sent isn't really what we're talking about here. We're just talking about the portion of the size requirement. The year that the structure was built, right?
Well, the state legislation certainly is the backdrop that the council is going to have to consider when determining whether or not to adopt this legislation.
Right.
It certainly is going to play into their deliberations, their considerations. It certainly plays into the county's recommendation. And, you know, those issues, you know, definitely need to be considered by this board in developing your response and your comments. The specific proposals, as you pointed out in the staff notes, are are fairly simple and can be addressed, you know, individually, certainly. But Rob's questions certainly are, you know, relevant and also have to be considered by the rest of the board.
Now, we've had a number of of zoning change proposals coming down from the common council in the past six months. And I think with some of these, we've asked to maybe sit on it for just to get to digest it for a month. And and we're and we're a board that when we say a month, give us a month. We usually take at the next month's meeting and 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 get some resolution on it and go one way or the other. I feel I need to look at this a little further, not to make a decision tonight. I don't know what they're what the common council's timeframe is on getting this thing going. But I mean, we've done this in the past. If we ask for a month, I would feel comfortable doing that because I this is, it's a lot for me to digest right now. I don't know how the rest of the board feels. I know you've done a lot to explain why this is being done right now, Dan. I appreciate that.
Well, let me, let's back up for a second, and and this really is in response to this board's comments. Regular and continuous comments over the last two or three years, which is that the council needs to start acting and there is interest on the council at this point to start sending you issues with regard to the zoning code month by month by month. Okay, and I would expect that this board will be seeing these types of suggested amendments regularly for the next six to nine months. And this board has asked for the council to start acting rather than to just wait the three years it's going to take to revise the entire code. One of the reasons you've requested this repeatedly is because you are constantly put in the position where you have to make decisions based upon a code that is poorly written. So clearly, they are moving forward. They are not going to, you know, refuse to consider your comments if your comments come next month rather than this month. It's going to be on the floor on Wednesday night. This is going to be a a long discussion about some very complex and some very important issues.
Yeah.
You know, this is the beginning of the conversation. It's certainly not the end. I don't know technically what the timeline was in terms of when Sue received the referral. But again, as I've said to you before, the council is not going to say, no, sorry, you didn't respond quickly enough. We're going forward without you. And I assume if Don is still on the call, Don's going to agree with that, correct? Is Don still on the call?
I don't believe so.
I think so.
We lost our alderman.
He got tired.
I mean, there is certainly some merit to have it, you know, have this stuff all came about when, you know, the genesis of all of these calculations and and requirements for apartments like this, when they don't, you know, who knows why they were made when they were made or why they were done. But I mean, just look at the staff, you know, initially is agreeing with some with with a lot of this stuff. And I just need some more. I just need more time to look at this and, you know, make a educated decision by next month's meeting myself. So.
Let's go around the table and just, you know, address whatever questions there are. Let's address the specific changes that are being proposed. See if there is some sense of consensus regarding the individual ones and identify where the primary areas of concern are. Kevin, what were you gonna ask?
And I was immediately going to go toward owner occupancy required as one of the main topics.
We are not proposing to eliminate the owner occupancy requirement. My understanding is that there is going to be pressure put on the council. My understanding is that there is going to be pressure put on the council. To possibly address that as well, and I believe that. You know, that may be addressed in the future, but currently that is not on the table. So owner occupancy would continue to be a requirement under this proposal.
Great, thank you.
And as a planning board member, I would say I agree with that.
He should remain as a requirement.
Yes.
Agreed.
Want to take another issue?
Owner occupancy is not part of this proposal at this point.
Part of the, anyway, it's not part of the change, so.
The specific changes that are being proposed relate to. The language that says an accessory apartment may be located in a principal dwelling, provided that dwelling existed prior to nineteen eighty-two. Nobody has been able to identify where nineteen eighty-two came from. Other than the fact that that was the last time that this was addressed in any kind of, you know, global zoning process. So we are suggesting that the prior to nineteen eighty-two be eliminated. Is there any issue with regard to that?
None for me.
None, Kevin here.
Do I hear from the rest of you?
From Matt.
Okay, so we move on. The requirement is that the property itself contain a minimum of two thousand square feet of habitable space. Does anyone see any reason why that should continue? As long as the accessory dwelling unit and the main dwelling unit. Comply with the building code with regard to minimal habitable space.
I don't see why we have to keep it. This is Kevin, I don't see any reason.
I think the intent originated at two thousand square feet would be that the structure would be large enough, the main structure for a family to live in. And the accessory structure would go along with it, which is typically a smaller. Living space. To define that the main principal residence is a larger space. That's what's really being utilized with a small accessory space like over a garage or in a basement. So that you don't end up with two equal spaces or an accessory apartment that ends up being larger than the main house itself.
That clearly was the intention, do you see any reason for that to continue as a requirement?
I do personally because I've always felt that an accessory structure, an accessory apartment is a smaller. Unit that complements the main structure, it doesn't compete with it.
Okay, so for argument's sake, you have a primary structure that has seventeen hundred square feet. And the owner of the property wants to convert the property. So that there is an accessory dwelling unit of six hundred square feet. And the main part of the structure still remains at eleven or twelve hundred square feet. Is, do you have, I mean, under that scenario, what is the purpose of wiring?
Where, but that is not a big house. So typically, if that is not a large house, when you look at the city and its density. Typically, you won't have large parking areas, typically it wouldn't be a large piece of property, it wouldn't be a large house. So now if you start accommodating accessory use, which revolves either one or two people plus vehicles and, and the use of it. You could potentially overburden a, a smaller property that's in the city, that's in a more dense neighborhood.
Okay, and you feel that way regardless of whether both units end up being adequate. Under the New York State Building Code for habitable space.
Well, when you look at the definition of New York State Building Code and habitable space, you can have very, two very tiny spaces.
Yes, you can. So it would be permitted under the New York State law, but, you know, in essence, you know, the position you would be taking is that. We should be able to be more restrictive in our residential neighborhoods than the New York State Building Code permits.
Well, this goes back to different zones, you're talking, I mean. There are neighborhoods in the city that have different characteristics. If you're in a very more dense populated area, typically you would have smaller units. And typically, they would be closer together. If you go into a more residential setting with more spread out homes, larger homes, you wouldn't necessarily have that. So this is where you go into different zones that are supposed to be dealt with through the zoning. You know, the new process for a new code. I mean, you look at two thousand square foot house down on Post Street versus a two thousand square foot house. That could be in Roseville Park, there's a big difference when you look at density.
Anyone else?
I see Robert's point there, so I'm leaning towards what Robert's saying.
We hear from anyone else?
I, I agree with, with Wayne. I haven't seen enough or had time to, that, and I don't want to just throw this out.
What is that, is that me?
I don't know who it is.
Okay, so we move on, minimum floor area for an accessory apartment shall be three hundred square feet. But in no case shall it exceed twenty-five percent of the habitable area of the dwelling in which it is located. Or six hundred square feet, whichever is less. Unless, in the opinion of the planning board, a greater or lesser amount of floor area is warranted by the. Circumstances of the particular building. The proposal in front of the council is to delete that altogether. And basically replace it with language that says accessory apartments. Will comply with all minimum standards set by the New York State Building Code and other controlling New York State and local laws with regard to habitable space.
But now if you limit that, you're also limiting the ability to say how big an accessory unit's going to be. So potentially you could have a two thousand square foot house with a twenty-five hundred square foot accessory unit.
And?
That's the whole intent of the way the law was written is again, back to my argument that accessory units are not supposed to compete with the main. Building. And the primary use. Accessory units are supposed to be like a small one bedroom, a mother daughter, small apartment over a garage. It's not supposed to be, I don't want to use the word excuse, but it's not supposed to be a mechanism to turn a single family into a two family.
Right, and that's what the planning board will do in the context of the special permit review and the site plan review. And again, it puts the authority and discretion back in the hands of the reviewing board. Whether or not a specific proposal is appropriate.
Robert, you wanted to finish your thought?
No, I'm just saying that if you take all of this out of the code, where does the planning board have the teeth to make these decisions when they're then appealed?
Dan, you're muted.
I don't understand the question, Rob. The teeth that you have to make the decision is that the site plan review or the special permit is not granted unless the planning board votes to do so. You have all the.
What is the planning board, board supposed to use as a guide so that we're not arbitrary and capricious in our decisions?
Details that are provided with regard to the density of the neighborhood, the character of the neighborhood, the proposal that is put in front of you. The specifics with regard to the. The property at issue, the layout of the property at issue. And, you know, what proposal is in front of you. Arbitrary and capricious, you know, I mean, the, the, you know, something is arbitrary and capricious if it is done without reason. Okay, you have reasons and you articulate those reasons in every matter that is put in front of you. You put those reasons on the record, you explain the basis for those reasons. And you make a record, which means by definition, it's not arbitrary and capricious.
Robert, would you be more comfortable with some, something simpler than that? Possibly a percentage of the dwelling?
Certainly be simpler, but I think by taking it completely out. I just, I think the planning board is, is losing, I don't know, I just. I feel like by stripping the code down, we're just gonna have a more difficult time in the future making these decisions.
What is the, what is the minimum standard that's set by New York State Building Code? In the next paragraph down, what, what does that mean?
I don't know what that number is.
I don't know what the specific number is, but the building department. Is required to ascertain that and advise, you know, individuals prior to issuing. You know, building permits or certificates of occupancy.
I think that's where Robert was saying that, you know, habitable space, if, you know, you could. Have two units virtually that are equally, you know, equally square footage. And then you wouldn't really have an accessory unit type situation.
That's what I was about to say, where the line between, the line that defines where. An accessory apartment becomes a second actual unit, is that, that gets blurred now.
Family versus a house, versus a home with an accessory dwelling unit.
Take a one-story home and then you turn the entire basement, which has the same square footage as this first floor. Into an entire second unit, that's really a two-unit. House from that on, it's not an accessory apartment.
Well, it looks like they're removing that terminology and they're adding this other statement.
Right.
We don't, there's no, I don't know what the minimum standard is that's set by New York State.
I thi- I think the minimum standard is pretty low, I just, I just looked it up. I mean, I don't know if this is accurate, but you have to have at least one room of a hundred and twenty square feet. And net floor area of not less than seventy square feet in other rooms. It, it could be potentially small.
And what the state legislation reads is accessory structure shall mean a structure. That is accessory and incidental to a dwelling located on the same block, on the same lot.
So that clarifies the garage unit over the garage because it's a separate structure. So those are easier.
Right, but going, going back up to the second item, not to go backwards, but that was. Part of what staff's concern was that you could have then people that have a residential. Home and they build an accessory structure just for the purpose to create a second unit on the lot. But does that, that unit then no longer has to meet the setback requirements? So then you, you get into these other separate considerations that the board wouldn't have. I don't know, and I, not to use Robert's words of teeth, but you, you really have to look at those things very closely. As to what you could be allowing to become established. Is that what you truly want to do?
I don't think it's something we're gonna decide tonight, but I think this is a healthy discussion, so people like Wayne and Chuck can, can sit on it, think about it. And then we can revisit it next month.
And Vince, where are you?
I think Robert's point is well taken and let Wayne and Chuck chew on it and revisit it next month. Because it's not clear to me what they're actually attempting to do, but. Just the fact that they're eliminating that terminology and just saying that, you know, meets the minimum standards. Is set forth by New York State Building Codes, we don't know what, I don't know what that really means. Other than what Carla said, you know, a hundred and twenty square foot, not less than seventy.
A hundred and twenty square foot for one room plus additional rooms at seventy square feet. I mean, I, I would have to research that more, that was a.
Yeah.
Very quick Google search there.
Okay.
But there seems to be some details in this proposed state legislation about. Detached accessory units must be greater than two hundred square feet, maximum fifteen hundred square feet. Which is quite large maximum, but depends on the size of the house. Details in, in this proposal, which is not what we're considering now.
Okay, so you just Googled New York State Building Code?
Well, I did for that first question, but we could get, we could get more detail from the building department if that's something that. That you want.
And again, the discussion is beginning at this point and. The Laws and Rules Committee is going to be discussing this on Wednesday night. I believe that the Ulster County Planning Board is preparing. For want of a better term, a position paper with regard to how removing these impediments serves the county housing plan. I would urge all of you to, you know, try to tune in on Wednesday evening and follow the discussion. I would also urge. Anyone who wants, you know, specific documentation with regard to what is pending. And what is currently existing, you know, to contact us. Far enough in advance so that information can be provided. Again. We have been used to years going by without the council attempting in any way to address the zoning code. And. This process is going to be continuing and you'll be getting these every month. I'm a little bit. You know, it's very difficult to discuss them at ten o'clock after a four-hour meeting. You know, particularly when we're talking about issues of this, you know, you know, this consequence. You know, and unfortunately it gets put at the end of the agenda, everybody's exhausted. And, you know, I don't want it minimizing this board's opportunity to participate. In the council's deliberation with regard to these issues. So, I mean, it's possible that, you know, I mean, we can move these discussions up in the agenda. But again, discussions about issues of this substance, of this level of importance at ten o'clock at night. After four hours is, is, you know, not productive.
Well, I, I would, not to add more special meetings, but if these are something that. The council is going to be sending batches of. It might be helpful to know what those batches are going to be and, and have them all considered and discussions at the same meeting at the same time.
Well, but that's not how the legislative body works, the legislative body sends proposed legislation, one item at a time. And, you know, either, you know, we're going to continue in the pattern that we've been in for the last, you know, four years where this board keeps telling them. You know, you gotta start addressing things and they ignore you, or they start addressing things and. You know, this board figures out a way to, to, you know, deliberate about those suggestions at some time other than ten o'clock at night.
Can we just touch on the last part of this, Dan, with the parking, just real quickly? I mean, it looks like the board is going to obviously be delaying this until next month, but I, I do want to just cover the last. You know, questions that we had with respect to the off-street parking section. And then the other question I would ask to just touch on is that, I mean, the goal of this, I guess, we had a brief discussion before the meeting. It's really not going to create affordable housing, it's just going to create more housing, more housing opportunity, but affordability.
There's a significant disagreement about that between the city planning department and the county planning department and the state. The belief and the assumption based upon, you know, on data that they have presented is that. It will significantly increase affordable housing opportunities by increasing the overall stock. Particularly in the niche where affordable housing units usually are lacking. um, particularly in the, um, niche where affordable housing units usually are lacking. A mother-daughter, you know, um, you know, uh, mother-daughter, um, apartments, apartments for, um, our children who want to, you know, move back home, um, the apartment over the garage. Um, I mean, these are all by their nature, the types of, um, units that are currently missing from our market. And I believe that, um, when the county planning department speaks to the council about this, um, that is the position that they are gonna take. I am not a housing expert. I don't pretend to be. I don't pretend to be able to say whether I agree with, um, you know, one side or the other. Um, but there is a very large contingent that believes that this type of legislation is the only way to effectively, um, address affordable housing issues.
Has the city's new housing director weighed in on this, or?
Yes, and he is a thousand percent in support of it.
I haven't heard anything from him, that's why I'm surprised you, I haven't heard anything.
And specifically has advocated for this based upon its impact on the affordable housing market and creating that niche of the market that is currently lacking.
Did he submit something, council, you could send along to the board?
Uh, he spoke to the council at the council's last meeting. Um, no, he hasn't submitted something in writing. He's not a, um, you know, he, his, his recommendation is not solicited as in the course of, you know, zoning revisions.
No, I, I understand that. I'm just curious if he, he submitted anything that's the board.
Nothing in writing.
Here with the board.
So the other issue that Sue had raised was the parking issue. Um, and again, um, we regularly deal with, um, uh, you know, issues regarding parking and parking being, and being an impediment to proposals that are put in front of you. Um, this basically would say that one parking spot is required per dwelling unit unless the board in the course of site plan or special permit review determines that more parking is necessary. So would eliminate the need to go back and forth between this board and the ZBA. It would eliminate the, um, parking variance requests that both this board and the ZBA deal with on a regular basis. And again, would leave the discretion in this board to determine how many spots are appropriate based on a specific proposal that's in front of you.
So Dan, that's for, uh, one and two-family dwellings and also all multifamily.
Yes. And I would also note that in the state legislation, and I believe that the state legislation goes too far, um, and probably will end up being curtailed to a certain extent. The state legislation requires that all parking requirements, um, related to accessory dwelling units are impermissible and, um, cannot be imposed by a municipality.
So Dan, you, you, just to go step back to beginning the conversation, you said that the common council right now is not, they don't have an owner occupancy requirement for this type of housing?
No, they don't. It's in the, it is currently in the code. It is remaining in the code. There is no proposal at this point to remove it. What I said was that, yeah, go ahead.
So that will control any like type of absentee landlord or landlords trying to create more units, et cetera?
Correct.
What controls are the councils are gonna put in to prevent people from building these accessory apartments for Airbnb purposes?
Uh, the, uh, a specific prohibition from, you know, short-term rentals.
Is that being proposed?
Um, yes. I mean, it's not in, it's not in, um, it's not in this version, um, in terms of this round. Um, but the state legislation, um, specifically prohibits, uh, short-term rentals. Um, the county is similarly recommending that. Um, it's difficult for the council to address that now when we don't even have a definition of short-term rental and we're still addressing, um, you know, those issues through the revisions to the hotel sections. So again, this is all, I mean, this is proceeding on a parallel track to the short-term rental discussion. Um, with regard to the short-term rental discussion, we just got the data from the county with regard to what short-term rentals are currently running in the city. Um, and the council is also gonna be addressing that, uh, moving forward. But these two, um, have to be, um, addressed and adopted, um, simultaneously.
Well, I, Dan.
Yeah, I know Wayne wants to close out.
I do, I, but I, I do appreciate you engaging in discussions with us, with this, with this board for this and other matters and I, you know, I rely a lot on you for your advice and, um, I know you, I, I, I appreciate it and I, I just, I need some more time on this and I think maybe others do, so, um, I'm gonna, do, do I need to make a motion to table this right now, Sue, or is that?
Begin.
All right, um, at this time, make a motion to table this item until the next month. Um, who's the second?
I would suggest, Wayne, that rather than just tabling it, that the board officially request or notify the council that you are not prepared to make your recommendation at this point and you are requesting that they do not act on, um, the proposal, um, on, you know, until next month.
Okay, I, I can, that, that sounds appropriate. I'll, I'll go with that. I'm gonna amend my motion to reflect what Dan has just suggested. Uh, do I have a second on that? Second by Charles Palaco. All in favor, Wayne Platt as a yes. Charles Palaco. You're a yes, give me a thumbs up, Chuck. All right, Robert Jacobson? Matt Gillis?
Yes.
Kevin Roach?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. And Vince, I know you're, you're, give me a thumbs up too on that. You're good?
No good.
All right, um, all right, anything else to sue tonight?
That is it.
All right, I'm making a motion to adjourn. Do I have a second?
Matt.
Second by Matt Gillis. All in favor, Wayne Platt as a yes. Charles Palaco?
Yes.
Robert Jacobson?
Yes.
Matt Gillis?
Yes.
Kevin Roach?
Yes, please.
Okay.
Pretty much.
We'll see everybody next Monday. Um, thank you so much for tonight. It was a long night, got a lot accomplished. And, uh, take care, folks.
Good night, folks.